Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting of Tuesday, October the 3rd. We're ready to get things started. And as per our usual tradition here in council chambers, we'd like to start off with the singing of "Oh, Canada." So we've got our singer here today, and let me introduce her first. Tammy Armani. Tammy was born and raised in Niagara Falls, and she's always loved singing. She began singing professionally at the age of 18. She's recorded several songs and has participated in the Niagara Tapestry Christmas CD. Tammy also plays the piano and loves to paint, draw, and sew. So I'd like to welcome Tammy up to the microphone, and she's going to share with us her version of the National Anthem. So, welcome, welcome.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
So Tammy, I just want to say thank you very much. That seems so effortless. For me, it's like I'm pushing rope whenever I try to sing. And I gotta say, on behalf of the city, that was so well done. I can't wait to, I want to find more about your Christmas CD. So, thank you very much. Well done, well done. Thank you very much. And to all the ballplayers, thank you for taking your caps off. We appreciate that show of respect. So now, we're going to continue on with our land acknowledgement. So we'd ask everyone to continue standing, please. And we'd like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who are stewards of this land for millennia before us. I'd like to invite Brian Kahn, who's a local artist of Métis descent and an advocate in the Indigenous community, to share his testimony. If I can just get you to draw your attention to the screens, please.
My name is Brian Kahn. I live in Niagara Falls, but my ancestors, they come from the north, from the far north. They are the Musquee, and I am Métis. So I'm going to start the meeting today with what is known as a traditional opening. And we don't know what your day was like as everyone gathers here in the meeting. Somebody may have had a fight with a spouse member, or someone may have cut them off as they were driving to the meeting. So if we all come together in a good way, in a good mind, and think of all the great gifts that have been given to us by the Creator. So with that, I call to Kissimmee, the Great Spirit, the Creator. And we are thankful to Him for all of the gifts that He has given to us. And the greatest of those gifts is the gift of Mother Earth. And through Her, we are given additional gifts, plants and medicines that grow from the ground. And we are grateful to each and every one of them, for they nourish us and they heal us as we continue through our journey. We are grateful to the Tree Nation, because the Tree Nation, the trees stand tall and proud, and they provide us with the materials to make our homes. Traditionally, they provided the materials to build our fires for staying warm and for our ceremonies. The trees and the forests and the lands are also a place for all the two-legged, the four-legged, the swimmers, the crawlers, the flyers, and we are grateful to each and every one of them. And when I think of all of those gifts that the Creator's given to us for us to use, we must be reminded that as we come across an item that we want to harvest, that we don't take the very first one that we see, whether it's a plant or an animal. We don't even take the second one that we see. It's not until we find the third that we realize that there is enough for those who follow behind us, whether it's those who follow the next day, or those who follow for generations to come. And those are the teachings of my ancestors. We are grateful for the four winds that blow and the four directions that surround us. With that, that brings the change of season and new opportunities. At this time, it is a time of harvesting of those plants. And with that, we take one of the sacred medicines, tobacco, and we lay it on the ground as a gift to Mother Earth for giving us that opportunity to grow and nourish that plant or that medicine, which ultimately comes back to us. So we're grateful for that harvest that we have. Living in Niagara, we're surrounded by water, and the water is so important. It makes up a good part of our body. And it also provides us with refreshment throughout the day. But more importantly, it is through water that we have our very first homes. Before we were born, we lived within water, within our mothers. So we're grateful to that water. I look to the sky, and I see Brother Sun. He's out there, and he provides us with light and warmth, whether he's shining bright or whether hidden behind the clouds, he's there, and we know he's there, and we are grateful to him. At the night skies, Grandmother Moon, she shines high and strong and bright. And we are grateful for the gifts that she brings to us. But with that, we are grateful how she influences our bodies and influences the waterways, so that through Grandmother Moon, through the water, and through the women of our nations, that our future generations are born. We are grateful. And finally, I look to the night sky, and I see the stars that are up there. And I am told that those stars are our ancestors. They're watching over us. They're guiding us. They're leading us along our journey. And so with that, I will say hi, hi. Thank you. Merci, merci, make which.
Thank you, Brian Kahn. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, moving along the agenda. We're now looking for an adoption of the minutes from both our September the 12th meeting and also September 19 special council meeting. Motion by Councilor Peter Angelo II, by Councilor New Esteg. If there's no comments or questions, we'll call the motion. All those in favor, okay? And that's approved. Thank you for that. Next up, any disclosures of a pecuniary interest. Okay, we have no conflicts of council. That's great. We'll move along. Thank you for that. And now, everybody's favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's remarks. Just don't get so excited, everybody. There we go. First off, we'll start off on a sad note, the obituaries. Our sympathies go to the families of Louis Thibodeau, father of Aaron Thibodeau of our municipal works department, and the uncle of Councilor Victor Peter Angelo. Our condolences go to the families. The Niagara Falls Summer Trillium Award Ceremony took place recently, and there we were joined. I was joined by Councilors Strange, Peter Angelo, Patel, New Esteg, La Coco, and Baldinelli. And of course, it was hosted by Councilor Strange and Councilor Peter Angelo. And they were great. It was kind of a little bit of a competition to see who could screw up the names worse. So I'm not going to say what happened or what the outcome was, but it was a great day. And real quickly, this is where residents get to beautify their yard, and the person and the people that enjoy it the most are the people that live across the street from you. So it was really great to recognize all those people who work so hard in their gardens, making their houses look so much nicer. So it was a really great day. I'm sorry, what was that, Councilor? Yes? Okay. So... What he's trying to say, Councilor Strange, is that he did a better job with the names. That's what he's trying to say. But it was still fun. I enjoyed the entertainment of you two up there. It was a lot of fun. Moving along, the Niagara Falls Riverhawks had their home opener. I was joined by Councilors Patel, Baldinelli, and Strange as we dropped the puck before their first game. And it's kind of exciting. The Riverhawks are all owned by former Junior C players. And now they're the guys running the club. So really proud and excited for them. We had the Terry Fox Run recently, and we were joined by Councilors La Coco, Patel, Strange, New Esteg, Peter Angelo, and Thompson. We've got to get you guys to stick around for the pictures. We've got to get, so we get everyone in the group shot here. But thank you to all of you for being there for the Terry Fox Run and showing the importance of drawing awareness and raising funds for cancer research. It works. We know it works. Because if Terry Fox was around today with what he had, he'd have an 80% chance of survival. So it definitely works. So thank you for everybody, all the volunteers that came out, and all the staff that volunteered as well. We had our TD Tree Days Tree Planting, and we had Councilors Peter Angelo, New Esteg, and Patel that were there as we planted a bunch of trees in the city's north end. Anything you wanted to add to that one?
Sure. I think there was 378 trees that were planted that day. This Friday, there's another tree planting that EAC, the Environmental Action Committee, is involved in. That'll be another 100 trees you worship, and that's sponsored by Embra. I think they're still looking for volunteers. There was an article that Ray did in the paper as well. So if anyone wants to get out, the weather might be seasonal by then, not as warm as it is today. But that'll definitely put us over 1,000, which was our goal this year. So it'll be a goal of 1,000 every single year, and 500 of them were planted on private property, and 500 of them are going to be planted on public property. So congratulations to the EAC committee.
Well done. Fantastic. We also had our Niagara Falls Fire Department Volunteer Firefighter Recognition Banquet. I was joined by Councilor La Coco. Thank you for being there, and that was a really nice night. We had our Line of Duty Death Ceremony for our fire department, and we were joined by Councilors Thompson, La Coco, Patel, and New Esteg. MP Tony Baldinelli had his Fall BBQ Bash at the Serbian Center, and they raised food and funds for Project Share. And joining us was Councilors New Esteg, Patel, and La Coco. La Coco. We had our Niagara Falls Firefighter Association Meeting recently at Station 6 on Schuster Road, and we were joined by Councilors Peter Angelo and Strange. But we don't have a picture for that event, where they recognized you for your run across the Bruce Trail and presented a check toward the cause for the Ronald McDonald House and cancer research, which was really, really great. We had our National Day of Truth and Reconciliation Panel unveiling at Niagara Park's power station. And I was joined by Councilors La Coco and Patel, along with our Indigenous leaders. So it was a real great day down at the power station. We had truth and reconciliation flag raising and orange bench unveiling that took place in front of City Hall just this past Saturday. And you can see the DEI Committee who were there, as well as Brian Kahn, who did our land acknowledgement today for city council. So we did the flag raising, and I don't know if we've got a photo of the bench, too. Do we have a photo of the bench? Oh, we don't. Okay. So the DEI Committee put a bench, an orange bench, that is down there in the Rosberg Parquet, and it's just another great reminder. And it's too bad. I think we had a nice picture of it. But anyway, thank you for all that joined us that day. And that was, I was joined by Councilor Patel, La Coco, and New Esteg. We had the Islamic Society of Niagara Peninsula Community BBQ on the weekend, and I was joined by Councilor Patel. So Councilor Patel, thank you for being there. And council representation. So Councilor Patel representing the city at the grand opening of Haka Station Restaurant on Victoria Avenue. Also, thank you for that. Councilor New Esteg representing the city for the Rotarians Golf Tournament visit to Niagara Falls. Thank you for that. We had another flag raising for the United Way, and we have a little competition. Last year, we had won the cup, and then we lost it to Fort Erie. Now, that's for average donations per employee. So the competition's back on to see who's going to get the cup this year. So I did issue a challenge to Mayor Fort Erie, so we'll see how that one plays out. I'm sure that's going to ruffle a few feathers. And I was joined by Councilors Patel and New Esteg for the flag raising for the United Way. We had some grand openings and business happenings. We had the Queen V Beauty Bar Grand Opening. I was joined by Councilors New Esteg and Patel on Drummond Road. We had the Niagara Employment Help Center 40th Anniversary. I was joined by Councilor Patel and Regional Councilor Crater as well. We had the Dollar Tree Ferry Street Location Grand Opening. I was joined by Councilors Patel and Thompson. I went to the Calhoun Sportswear 50th Anniversary. That was in St. Catherine's. And the reason for that, it's an interesting thing, but a lot of my businesses that I've run over the years were in St. Catherine's, including my first one. I had a college pro painter franchise. And it was summer of 1985. I painted their house in St. Catherine's. It's a kind of funny story. But his wife's from Georgia, and she wanted a peach, and she picked the color for the house. But when we were done, the color we chose, it was more of a pink. And she said, "We have a problem. My neighbors aren't happy with me. We need to repaint my house." So we repainted it with more of a Georgia peach kind of color. So anyway, we've been friends since 1985. So they invited me. I was there with Mayor Sisko on the left, and happy to celebrate with them as well. Also, OLG had their new PlaySmart Center opening this past week, and I was joined by Councilor Patel for that. Grow just had a promotional event where they're giving turkeys away. This is a great place for people of food security challenges, where they've got all healthy foods at a fraction of the cost, everything from soups and vegetables and fruits and turkeys and everything else. And to qualify, you have to be in a certain bracket for earnings, but really grateful that they're down on Fourth Avenue in the old Boy Scout Hall. And lastly, Lucky Seven Liquidation had their grand opening on Montrose Road in the old diner. Help me out. Blue Line Diner. That's right. That was owned by Marcel Dionne for the longest time, and now it's Lucky Seven Liquidation. So I was joined by Councilor Patel and Regional Councilor Morocco, as well as our MPP. So our next upcoming meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October the 24th. And we thank everybody for their patience and their indulgence for these... Oh, and one other thing. Yes, go ahead, Counselor. Is that what he's trying to say? Okay. Get to your point, Counselor. What are you trying to say? All right, we're playing Minnesota, for anyone watching. Wildcard spot. I was at the game on Sunday, the last game against Tampa Bay, right? Go Jays! You never know. You never know what can happen. So I'll move on. I'll take the hint here from Councilor Strange. The only other thing I will mention, this past week, we did have scheduled a drone test that was to take place on the Canadian side of the border. And unfortunately, we weren't able to pull it off. We had some challenges. We were not able to fly the drones. There's a lot of challenges when you fly drones. It's a no-fly zone. If one of these drones hits somebody, it could do some serious damage. And we did have some challenges where we couldn't fly them. So, and then we only had a permit for a certain period of time with Transport Canada, and the permit elapsed. So we are going to have another date where we're going to test it out. This won't be with any sound. It'll just be a visual to get a feel for it. It's too bad, because right after the fireworks, of course, there were a lot of people that stuck around to watch the drone show, and it didn't happen this time. So anyway, we're working out the details, along with the Parks Commission and the Hotel Association Niagara Falls Tourism, to actually get to do one of these shows. So it is what it is, but we're working on it. We're working on it. So now, for what all of you have been waiting for, and I'm guessing you weren't waiting for my announcements or my awards. So maybe we'll start with your awards. The first things that I want to do is call up your coaches. So I can read your coaches. Michael Manella, the assistant coach, Bruno Lozati, head coach, and the other two assistant coaches, Matthew Meeger and David Rapp. So if you can join me up here. I did want to point out, Councilor Campbell is on Zoom, so he is here. Awesome. Congratulations, guys. So here's what I'll do, if it's okay with all the players. So I'm going to give a little bit of background of what happened and why you're here today, and why we're so proud that you're representing us and you did so well. And at the OBAs, then I'm going to ask your coaches to call you up one at a time. And then when you get about here, we'll stop, we'll do a picture. So anybody who wants to take pictures, come right up to the front here, so don't be shy. And we'll wait till you get your picture. We're going to give a little award. Now, I don't want to get you too excited or not, like nothing that fancy. It's the thought that counts. This came from my heart. I just want you to know. So it says Triumph. Congratulations on your team championship from all of us here at city council. So we're very proud of all of you. So let me read a little bit, and then we'll call you guys, fingers up, one at a time. We'll do the picture right here. Is everybody good with that? Clear? All right, good stuff. So, it's a pleasure to recognize the 12U Niagara Falls Falcons for winning the Ontario Baseball Association, or as we call it, the OBAs, A Division for 2023. So you've got some real talent here. Most of the team's members have been playing baseball together for the last five years. The team of young players competed against 11 other teams in Chatham, Ontario. They had six wins and only a single loss during the tournament weekend. Good job. After a lot of baseball to start the tournament off, they found themselves facing off against Toronto Playgrounds on Championship Day and came away with a convincing 14-7 win. That is convincing. Are you guys all playing it out in your head now? You're imagining the game? You twitched that night in your bed because it was so good? Then they played the London Tin Caps in a hard-fought bet, but they lost in extra innings, 10-7. Finally, they rematched the Tin Caps in the championship winner-take-all. And this is the game where you emerged as the winners with an 18-6 final score. That's awesome feedback. Congratulations to the entire team, all of the families, and of course, our coaches. Head coach Bruno Lozati and your assistant coaches, Matthew Meeger, David Rapp, and Michael Manella. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to call each of you, as I mentioned, or we're going to have the coaches call you up. But I do want to mention one other thing, you know, and we're going to talk a little bit about this once I have all of you up here. But I want to acknowledge your coaches, too, because yes, all the players get acknowledged, but these guys don't do it for the money, I think. Is that right? Yeah. So the pay's not that great, zero. And yet they get all the parents really happy with them, when their kids don't get enough playtime, or when people don't make practices, or they're too hot, or they're too this, or they're too that. These are the ones that keep the whole team together, dealing with the parents, the players. How would it be end for your coaches? So we have one of these fancy awards for your coaches, too. So don't worry. We won't leave them out. So this time, I asked the coaching staff, they called the players out one by one. We're going to give them a triumph award. We'll do our pictures right here. So you got one right there. Oh, good. That's for you, buddy. You put your... Let's clap when they get the name. Congratulations.
Jackson Mastrobro.
Are you like the official photographer back there?
Jackson Mappo.
Congratulations. Oh, good. All right, there you go.
Luca Lozati.
Don't worry. We'll do a group shot when it's all done. We'll get everybody. Can you come right up? You have to Zoom.
Luke Fratangelo.
Congratulations.
Nolan Rapp. Owen Bender. Porter Swift.
Thank you.
Ed Leo Manella.
So what I'd like to do, we're out here. Why don't we, we'll do the group shot, and we'll say a couple words. Is that okay? So, Tad, can you help us line this up here? So we've got to leave a couple rows here, like maybe someone stand. All the guys to the back. Jeez, in this group, I'm going to be in the front row. That was $5 a picture. So here's what I'm going to do now. I just want to say a few things, and then I'm going to ask the coaches to maybe give us a little bit of an overview of the season, like your takeaway, and any other comments that you want to add for them. I remember you got everyone at home falling off, at least two people, and all of us here. No, actually, you'd be surprised how many people watch this. So a couple things I want to say. First off, to the parents and the family members, thank you. Because we know the commitment. All my kids played sports, and I know what it's like. You know, sometimes you meet grandparents, you meet neighbors, brothers, sisters, whatever. Everyone's doing their bit to get everybody to all the different events. And then there's practice, right? Practices are hard. Now, I tell you, it gets harder as they get older, because they all start getting jobs. And you start mixing that in, and life gets a little more complicated. But it's hard, and some you have more than one kid to deal with. It just makes it that much harder. And it's not cheap to play sports. You travel. You guys were playing out of town. Hotel rooms, dinners, gas, everything else. I just want to say, first off, how about we do a big thank you to all the family members that supported you guys? And the last thing I want to say is to the coaches and to the family members and to the baseball league, to the GMBA. Thank you very much for your commitment, because this goes way beyond sports. This is about developing these people into citizens, contributing members of society, and teaching them respect, commitment, follow-through, and teach them, when you work hard, you guys get to hold the triumph award. It's because you played hard. You played hard, you worked hard, and you made it happen. You made your city of Niagara Falls very proud. Niagara Falls has a great reputation as being a great sports town, great baseball town. And you kept that reputation going wherever you played. So you kept us proud. And I just want to say thank you, because you know, my parents always said, "Busy kids stay out of trouble." And we're trying to teach these kids, when you put your mind to something, you can do anything, anything at all. So on behalf of the city and city council, we just want to say to the parents, to the coaches, to the kids, you guys were awesome. Congratulations and thank you very much. Now I'll stop talking, and I'd love to hear from the coaches if maybe you'd share some words of wisdom for everybody at home and everybody here.
Sure. I would share first, thank you to the city of Niagara Falls, certainly for the recognition and for the resources that certainly the mayor, city council invests in baseball here and, you know, and other sports around. But certainly, you folks keep the park in phenomenal shape. But certainly, you folks keep the park in phenomenal shape, and we're looking forward to the new hidden tunnels next year. So certainly, you know, for development was pretty high this year, we're expecting good things again next year. Hopefully, we'll see you next October as well. Other than that, I mean, thanks, appreciation note to the GMBA executive, Nigos Karinji, the president, Jeff Allen, vice president. Volunteers, right, that certainly helped do a lot of work, incredible amount of work behind the scenes to let us coach and let the players play. So very appreciative of the team effort that goes on for that. For the season itself, we had a bit of a slow start this year. We're a 12U team, and we play in a loop with 10 teams in total, and nine, or eight of those teams are 13U teams, so we were playing against older teams for a greater part of the year. And we finally hit our stride, I would say, you know, mid to late June, and the boys came together, you know, and like sports is, we peaked at the right time, and we were riding a pretty hot streak heading into OBA's. Boys were, and families, everyone was very respectful throughout the tournament weekend. Teams were saying that they were cheering for us to beat certain teams, and that's always great to hear. But we've been coaching these kids now for the last five years, and I couldn't be prouder of their efforts. I'm glad that the effort ended with the result we're looking for, and that's always winning the last game, right? So we were able to do that this year, very proud of you, so.
Anything else in the assistance?
Yeah, the only thing I wanna say is one thing. At the end, I was most proud of the kids. We took, we had a loss, our only loss in extra innings, and you guys know sports, I figured we were finished. The morale was down, so I didn't know what to say to the kids. So I only went, I had to go to where I thought I could get some inspiration. So it's true story, I actually went to the mothers. And I asked the mothers, what could I say to get these kids and pump them back up? So I took a lot of the information from the mothers, with some of the comments and the other comments of the coaches. The kids rallied, and it showed, they showed good character. So I'm really proud of the boys, mostly for that, and being resilient, turning it around, and showing a strong character.
Well done. Well, moms, whatever, I don't know what those words of wisdom are, but hopefully we'll read them out in your book. Yeah, so thank you very much, thank you to all of you. So thanks, guys, thanks for coming. Coaches, grab yours too. And if there's any players that weren't here today, they're welcome to stick around for the rest of the riveting meeting. Okay. Sorry, folks, I'm just getting my note here. Okay. Sorry about that, folks. Okay, moving on, the agenda 6.2, this is a Birchway Niagara, formerly Women's Place of South Niagara. We've got Amanda Brayett, Director of Development and Stewardship from Birchway Niagara, along with Amy Leighton, founder of the Lip Sync Niagara fundraiser. We're gonna present council with a third-party fundraiser taking place to support Birchway Niagara. So I won't say anymore, I'll leave the magic to you to share with us.
Good evening, Mayor Doudady and members of council. My name is Amanda Brayett, as mentioned, and I'm proud to be here representing Birchway Niagara. Before I begin, I would like to thank Councillor Laurie LaCoco for suggesting us to come and speak with you this evening. She's been an amazing supporter of ours. Let me just get my clicker ready. So, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the 8th Annual Lip Sync Battle organized by one of our own residents, Amy Leighton. The proceeds from this event support Birchway Niagara's services for those affected by gender-based violence and has a profound impact on our community. Birchway Niagara's newly-formed mission is to be a shoulder to lean on, a voice to advocate for, a space to feel safe in, an ally to trust, a guide to navigate, and a counselor to heal. This new mission speaks to the unwavering commitment of Birchway Niagara to stand alongside those who have experienced various forms of abuse, offering them solace and support on their path towards healing and recovery. Thank you. Oh, sugar. There we go. Nope. Thank you. So the demand for services for people in need of help far exceed what is available, and the frightening statistics shown here demonstrate that, just this. This month, Niagara Regional Councillor joined 47 other municipalities and townships in Ontario and recognized intimate partner violence as an epidemic in Niagara in a unanimous decision. This declaration is so important in creating awareness and resources to help deal with this crisis. Birchway Niagara and its dedicated team of staff are at the forefront of addressing this crisis, and support from the community are crucial in ensuring that there is safe shelter, services, and a caring ally to help those who are suffering. Allow me to introduce to you one of our allies, Amy Leighton, who is a dedicated member of our community, who was inspired to organize her own fundraising event, the Lip Sync Battle, eight years ago, because she has witnessed the profound impact of abuse on people she loves and cares about. Over the seven years that Amy has hosted this event, she has raised over $57,000 to help families in Niagara. Amy rallies others to join her either by sponsoring, volunteering, donating a prize, or being one of the brave contestants who perform. Amy's efforts are making real change in the lives of our community members, and we are so proud and thankful that she partners with Birchway Niagara.
I'm always too tall for microphones. Alright, I'll do my best here. I might have to lean. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thanks again, Lori, and thank you to Councillor Mona Patel for attending last year's event, that was wonderful. This year's event is scheduled for Saturday, November the 4th at Club Italia. Promises, again, to be an evening of entertainment, camaraderie, and a shared commitment to making a difference. For just $80 a person, I like that we, attendees will enjoy entry, we will let you in. You'll also receive a buffet dinner at Club Italia, which is amazing. There will be dancing, we're adding a dance floor this year, and it will be a fantastic night of fun. Because I believe that a city is absolutely nothing without its people from all walks of life, I kindly request that the City of Niagara Falls Council consider supporting this noble cause in the following two ways. Firstly, I would love if you would share information about this event. We ask you to share about the 8th Annual Lip Sync Battle and Birchway Niagara through the city's website and official social media channels. This will definitely help raise awareness and encourage participation from the community. And secondly, if you could attend the event, that would be wonderful. We would be honored if council members would consider purchasing tickets and attending the event themselves. Your presence would not only show support for this vital cause, but also inspire others to join in the effort. I did recently, just today, have someone donate a ticket, so that's a possibility as well. If you can attend, you can buy one and donate it. In closing, I would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Jim Doudady for his previous support, including submitting his own video performance as part of his pre-recorded welcome message a few years ago for the event, when it had to be livestreamed due to the pandemic. So we did still do this through the pandemic in 2020 and 2021. We had WeStream livestream it for us from the Greg Fruin Theater. With your support, we can continue to make a significant impact on the lives of those affected by gender-based violence in our community. Together, we can stand as a united front against abuse and violence. Let us take this opportunity to demonstrate that the City of Niagara Falls cares deeply for the well-being of its residents and is committed to providing support, healing, and hope to those who need it most. Hope is the most powerful of words, and it can change the lives of those who receive it. I'm certain the hope given to my sister and a couple of friends of mine who had to use the facilities at Birchway Niagara is what kept my sister alive and able to move on with her life. So thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you very much, ladies. Yes. You can clap. Sure, we'll give them a clap.
We had one more, one more little thing here, sorry, I know we only had a couple minutes. We're gonna try and play this video. The sound might not work, but if the sound doesn't work, then we can maybe encourage.
If the sound doesn't work, it might be better.
It's lip syncing, it's okay.
I don't think it's gonna work.
Is it not gonna work?
Oh, it's not working?
Oh, I hit enter, did I just, I went wrong? Sorry. No. Oh, that's too bad.
Maybe that's something to do with the 20 bucks I slipped them, I don't know what it is.
But thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you, just before you run away, because I think some councillors wanted to talk, and just to explain, I need to explain this, just to help promote the event, we did a little video where I was singing into my hairbrush?
Yes.
And, yeah, it was as bad as you think it was, it was, it was. Yeah, we had a little bit of fun, so, but unfortunately, seems that video's been deleted for no one to ever see it again, so you'll only have to hear about it. So we had, I saw some, Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Birchway is a great organization to have in our community, they help so many people when they're in need, women and families. I would like to move the motion that we do whatever we can to promote the information on the website, social media, email, whatever, and that if you can purchase a ticket, please purchase a ticket. I know we each have our own individual budgets to do that. I've already purchased my ticket, and I'm looking forward.
Yes, thank you very much.
I know we all got emails to participate in the Lip Sync. I don't know about you, but I declined that, but I just purchased the ticket. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I think it's a worthy cause, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for, they actually asked me to not perform, that's what they said, they would, yes. Councillor, okay, okay, motion by Councillor LaCoco, seconded by Councillor Patel. Did you wanna speak, Councillor Newsteg? Yeah?
Sure.
First of all, I wanna say thank you very much, Amy, as a volunteer standing up and doing something like this, I think it's great, and I really, I know there's volunteer recognition event in November that where the city recognizes volunteers, I don't know how that works yet, I'm still new at all of this, but I certainly hope that you are recognized for outstanding work. Secondly, back to Amanda, I know you do, I'm just curious about all the money that's raised. So we, I know there's, well, now, there's this one, there's the Book Riot that you raised 116?
16.
16, oh, pretty close. What other events, third, or third-party or other events are?
That's a great question. So we do have three signature fundraising events, the Book Riot, like you'd mentioned, that's been around longer than we've been, a registered charity, so over, well over 40 years. That is our largest, and in attendance, we had over 5,000 people. Followed by that, in November, for Women Abuse Prevention Month, in honor of that, we are selling an online raffle calendar for $10. Every day in November, there'll be somebody winning an amazing prize valued of at least $200, grand prize for $10,000, or $1,000, sorry. And you can purchase a number of tickets, you can just visit birchway.ca to do that. And then in March, for International Women's Day, we did have a lot of great representation from the city for our brunch bid and bowl at Club Italia. So we brunch and bid, and then we make our way over to Cataract Bowl and do some bowling, and that event raised over $66,000.
So maybe I can also suggest in November, when we're doing the website, trying to get the Lip Sync out, that we can add that as well, so people get more exposure.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for stepping up and doing what you can as a citizen.
Thank you so much. And if I may just add, so we, we are so thankful for the community's support and people like Amy who step up and, and take the effort to, to try to raise funds for us. So we do have an annual fundraising goal of over $600,000, and between all the third-parties last year, over $100,000 was raised. So that is a true testament to the community standing by the work that Birchway does, which is just incredible, so humbling.
That's awesome. Well, thank you very much. So we've got a motion moved by Councillor LaCoco, seconded by Councillor Patel, that we promote and support your event through all of our media, through City Hall, and our, and our social media channels, and as well encourage everyone to buy tickets. So we've got the message, we're set to vote, all those in favor, okay? And of course, that's unanimous. So thank you very much, ladies, appreciate you coming on.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for not playing the video, thank you so much, thank you.
It's out there on Facebook.
Alright, so we gotta go back on the agenda to the in-camera, so we're looking for a motion to go in-camera. Motion by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Newsteg, all those in favor, okay? And that's approved. So folks, we are now gonna go in-camera, where we have to talk about things we're not allowed to talk about out in the open, shouldn't be long, and then we're gonna resume back here again. I'm guessing maybe 20 minutes, half hour kind of thing, and, or less, and then we'll continue on with the regular scheduled meetings. So I thank everybody for their patience, thank you.
Okay, folks, welcome back. We've now concluded our in-camera session. I'd also like to welcome Regional Councilor Joyce Morocco to the chambers. Thank you, Joyce, for being here. We're now moving on to our planning matters, and I would now ask our clerk if he would please introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to facilitate the creation of a new lot for the construction of a detached dwelling at 8178 Thorold Stone Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on September 1st, 2023, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting or by signing the sign-in sheets that are located just outside Council Chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would now like to ask Mackenzie CC, senior planner, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff and residents. Thank you for joining the public meeting for the zoning bylaw amendment application AM 2023:12 for 8178 Thorold Stone Road. The subject property, which is outlined in yellow on this slide, is located on the south side of Thorold Stone Road, east of Kaler Road. The property is currently developed with a detached dwelling. Directly north of the subject property are detached dwellings, the Circle K convenience store and gas station, and St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Elementary School. Immediately south of the property is Shriners Creek and other detached dwellings. Directly to the east and west are detached dwellings, and further west on the south side of Thorold Stone Road is a commercial plaza. The subject lands are approximately 0.14 hectares in size, and the city's official plan designates the property as residential in part and environmental protection area in part. The environmental protection area corresponds with an adjacent water course and woodlot, and staff would like to note that the lands that are subject to this amendment do not contain the environmental protection area land use designation. The property is correspondingly zoned residential 1C density zone in part and hazard land zone in part in accordance with the zoning bylaw 79200 as amended. They're proposing to rezone the property to a site-specific residential 1E density zone to facilitate the creation of a new lot for the construction of a detached dwelling. A consent application is proposed to facilitate law creation. The residential 1E density zone has a minimum lot frontage requirement of 12 meters. Further, a maximum width of 60% of the lot frontage, or 6.4 meters, is permitted for a driveway or parking area in the front yard. Site-specific zoning relief has been requested by the applicant for the purpose of permitting a lot frontage of 10.6 meters and a maximum width of 84.4% of the lot frontage for a driveway or parking area in the front yard. It is noted that the requested relief for the minimum driveway width is required to accommodate an onsite turnaround that will eliminate the need for exiting vehicles to reverse onto Thorold Stone Road. This will increase the safety for all vehicles and pedestrians. The proposed dwelling that is proposed will comply with all other standard R1E density regulations, including lot area, lot coverage setbacks, building height, and minimum landscape open space. A public information open house was held on August 22nd, 2023. No members were in attendance that evening, and as of the preparation of this presentation, no written comments have been received. In conclusion, staff recommend that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment as detailed in report number PBD 2023-57. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any questions of council for our planner? Yes, Councilor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to, I'm sorry, your McKenzie, your last name.
CC.
CC. I have two questions. It talks about a tree preservation plan, and on the drawings, you can see all of the trees there. What is the tree preservation plan? How many trees are there, and how many would be cut down?
Through you to the councillor. So there were seven trees that were identified for removal due to their current health condition. Three trees were to be removed to accommodate the proposed construction, and then two trees were recommended to be pruned prior to construction.
Thank you. And through the mayor, so two are going to be pruned. How many else are being saved? Is it just those two, or are there others being saved?
I believe the others are being saved as well. It's just the three that are confirmed for removal to accommodate the construction.
And seven because of their health, three for accommodation to build, so that's 10 that are being removed. Two are going to be pruned.
Correct.
How many other are staying?
Any other trees onsite would be...
So we don't know those numbers, though?
No, this is all that was identified in the preservation report.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had, the wording hazard land zone, I asked this on another application. Can you please explain that? Everybody seeming to think that hazard land zone is chemicals and that sort of thing. Would you please explain what a hazard land zone is?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's usually associated with an environmental feature such as a water course or a woodlot in this case. So this is essentially reminiscent of the Shriners Creek and the associated woodlot to the south. And so the tree preservation plan was prepared in lieu of any other environmental studies and that. And also, given that the proposed development is occurring on the portion of the lot that's outside of that, there were no concerns from a local and regional perspective.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Yes, Counselor Patel, and then Strange.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
I drive by that area almost every day, and there seems to be, I think, some kind of hydro box there, right in front of the trees there.
Let me bring the photo up.
If you go to the left.
No, I won't. I won't have that view.
Oh, yeah, there's a big giant box. Would that be a problem, or stay there? They will have to move it?
So their driveway, they won't be, if they have to propose to remove it, they'll have to talk to the correct utility agency. So at the time of consent, we'll be circulating all the utilities, Embridge, Coach Cove, all of those companies. So if there was any need or desire to remove that, they'd have to pay for that relocation appropriately.
Okay, so it will not cost the city anything?
No, it wouldn't cost the city anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to the point of the tree, so there were seven that are unhealthy, so they have to come down regardless.
That's correct. That's what the...
So it's only three that are actually that, you know, they would come down anyways.
Correct, as a result. Thank you.
I just fell in the box. Fell in the box. It's to the left, yeah, to the east side of the property. Any other questions of council? Okay, seeing none, members of the public are advised the failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Land Tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to notify the city clerk to preserve their opportunity to appeal will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone scheduled to speak?
Your worship, there is no one that is registered online, but I do see some members in the gallery. We could reach out to see if there's anyone here that wishes to speak, and then we do have the applicant's agent online prepared to speak to council.
Okay, so we've got, so we have someone. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this development, to this proposal? Okay, looks like we have nobody. Okay. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative, and you mentioned that they're online. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we have Mr. Stephen Rivers. He's the agent from South Coast Consulting, and he's just connecting now.
Any luck? No? Okay, well, I think this one seems to be pretty straightforward, so hopefully we don't have any, if we have any questions, our staff can answer it. Okay, I've already got one over here, so he's ahead of you. So is there any, it seems like we do not have the applicant online. Is there any other questions that council has that maybe staff can address? Okay, seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The will of council, motion by, okay, motion for approval by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to the motion? Call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. So thank you very much, Ms. CC. Okay, we're moving along to item eight on the agenda, reports 2024 council schedule. It's recommended that council approve the proposed 2024 meeting schedule. Most, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Just before you call the motion or entertain any questions, I just want to point out that consulting with staff, we are making one recommendation to add another meeting in January, so that does not show up on the schedule or the calendar that is on the agenda. This addition would be on January the 16th. So we would now show three meetings in January, and just to provide further explanation, the meeting on the Monday, the 15th, would be an in-camera Q and A session regarding the budget. The next day, on the 16th, would be the regular council meeting, and then a meeting again, like we've done in years past, the following week on the 23rd, and that would be primarily focused on the budget. So just a one addition there on January 16th.
Okay, motion by Counselor Thompson to approve, I'm coming to you, Counselor, to approve the, I'm sorry, 2024 council schedule with the addition of January the 16th, and that's seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked about this a couple of meetings ago. There were a lot of residents that contacted me about the summer meetings and that the 1 PM was very inconvenient for people that worked. It didn't really matter to them that it was summer. They were still working, and they couldn't get off. Is there any way that we could move the 1 o'clock to 4 PM like the rest of the schedule? And then the other comment, I sent an email, and our clerk wasn't here last week, but our agenda gets posted on Thursday, and then on Friday, there's amendments, and some people don't know that there's amendments on Friday. So I was wondering if there could just be a little notation on the website that says, even though it's posted on Thursday, amendments could follow for the Friday, because people read the agenda on Thursday and think it's finished. Then they come to council on Tuesday. Oh, look, there's all of these things. So I was just wondering, that would be a simple notation on the website, and then if council could consider the 4 PM for the summer.
So why don't we start with the notation part, and then I'll come back to that. So, Mr. Clerk, maybe you want to comment on that, the amendments?
Yes, I think that's a great point and could easily be missed by members of the public looking at the agendas. I've already gone and made an adjustment on the webpage so that the public could be aware that amendments are needed to be followed, and we'll make sure that that stays on the webpage for the 2024 version as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And, I don't know, Mr. CAO, did you want to address the time issue for the summer meetings for July and August?
Thank you. Through the chair, obviously, council schedule is for councils to decide. I would just weigh in the fact that for each council meeting, we have a number of staff that are present for the meeting, and not just in the room, but usually online at their desk. The thing with summertime meetings is staff tend to look forward to the earlier start date, because then they get to also not stay late while it's usually a busy time of year for staff. But like I said, that would be one consideration. It's a staff matter. But like I said, it's up to council's decision on that. We can adjust our schedules as council sees fit.
Okay, do we have any comments or discussions or feedback that anyone's received from the public about the summer meetings? Yes, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I would say in my emotion, 1 o'clock, I think that's good for the summertime.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo, you're agreeable to that? So is there any other discussion around that timing? So you're, pardon me?
Would you earlier?
Yeah. So you see, you heard the amendment, Counselor LaCoco. Okay, so it's motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we approve the schedule with the addition of the January the 16th meeting and leaving the meetings at the earlier time for July and for August. Okay, so we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Okay, thank you for that. Yes, Counselor?
Is there not something as well through you, maybe to Mr. Burgess, our CAO, in regards to the hours that senior staff put in at council? So if our council meetings start after their day is finished, is it not loo time at that point?
Mr. CAO?
Yeah, that's correct. For union staff, it's actually paid overtime. For non-union staff, it's loo time. Most of the senior staff use up their loo time well before summer rolls around, so it's just free time after that, really, from the staff's point of view. So they've already essentially worked their additional 70 hours that they get for loo time. So they're really just doing it for free at that point.
Yeah, so from a corporate standpoint, and we don't have to give out loo time or actually pay people extra to be at council meetings if we actually started during their workday.
Yeah, you're just...
That's what I kind of thought, yeah.
Yep.
So there is a savings there as well.
Thank you for that.
And that's why a lot of other, like, regional council committee meetings are held during the day and that kind of stuff. A lot of it is because of the cost of the, you know, there is a cost of running those meetings at night.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to 8.2, whistleblower corporate policy. It's recommended that council receive the attached draft corporate policy for their consideration. Counselor Strange, Counselor LaCoco, all those in favor? Okay.
Oh, I wanted to talk on it. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry. Okay, are you seconding it?
I'll second it, but I do have two questions.
Yep, okay, so go ahead.
The first question is, in number seven, it says if the complaint is against the CAO to send it to the mayor, but 5.1 says if the complaint is against the CAO to send it to the solicitor. Which one do we do? Doesn't matter to me as long as they're consistent. It said two different things in two different places.
Okay, we'll ask our director of HR, Mr. Trent, Trent Dark, if he can help me. Trent, Trent, when I combine those two names, it's Trent. You know, I'm not very good with names.
Through the chair, I think it's intended to go to the mayor, so I can, I can take that, I can make that amendment.
Okay, great, thank you. And the other part, the question I have is, it says that it doesn't include council because council is part of the code of conduct with the integrity commissioner. But I guess my question is, what if there's a concern from a council member regarding staff? What is the process? Because this was about employees, not about council.
Yeah.
To the CAO.
To CAO. And then just follow if it is, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so motion by Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor LaCoco, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. 8.3, building permit fee review. We've got, give me half a second here. We've got some recommendations, updates to the building permit fee with an increase of 3% annually starting 2024. So that's the motion. We're looking for direction from council. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really had a challenge when I was reading this. We're increasing our fees, and we're told by the provincial government that our fees need to be lower in order to accommodate the developers in order to build houses. We seem to be on two different ends. One minute, it's we need to bring our fees up to go with the rest of the region, and on the other end, the province is telling us our fees are too expensive. So that's where I'm having this conflict. We're raising them, and the other conflict that I have is that we're fast-tracking some of the condos for commercial development, and then in turn, they could flip them to be VRUs. Those aren't residential units that our community is benefiting from. So those are my two concerns, and we're supposed to be lowering costs instead of increasing costs.
Okay, I'll get our CAO to weigh in on that one.
Yeah, through the, through the mayor to the counselor, it's always a challenge. At the end of the day, my grandmother used to say, there's no free lunch. So you're either going to charge it through a fee, or you're going to put it on the tax burden. And affordability, whether you're, either one is going to come back to the taxpayer, either upfront through a fee or, you know, through their annual tax bill. So at the end of the day, building fees are, building and planning fees are supposed to be cost recovery for the expenditures that are there. I think for, I think for many builders, it's also the speed, not just the actual cost of it. And so if we don't have enough cost, we can't hire the building inspectors to, or cost recovery, we can't hire the building inspectors to do the inspections or the planners to review the plan. So things can get, things get dragged on there. So it is a dilemma. You know, I wish I could wave my magic wand and lower those costs, but every year, my salaries go up and my other costs go up, and I have to recover at some point in time. With regards to the fast-tracking, fast-tracking is something we're still going to look at, and how that would apply and how that we can actually absorb that. So the fast-tracking concept is a great concept, but we still don't know exactly how that would work. So we're, we've kind of put that on a to-be, to-be reviewed, you know, pile to take a look at it. Other municipalities have done it. The challenge I have with that is, you know, someone pays the extra to do the fast-track on that, but I only have so many resources. So somebody else is going to get delayed, and am I going to pay penalties on those, you know, if I don't hit my statutory timeline? So it's something we need to take a look at to see how we resource that. With regards to, you know, being selective on what projects we want to do on fast-track or not, we really can't do that. At the end of the day, you know, a plan is a plan, you know, and a development is a development. You know, if someone, if we go into that and someone says, I'm paying the fee, we can't say, well, we're restricting it to only these types of developments. Because if we think, well, this condo could potentially be flipped into some other use, it's too hard for us to predict. So we would only be able to understand what was proposed and assess it based upon what was proposed, not what could happen with the project. So, you know, that's, that's where that's at. I just, for clarity on the report, too, the fees were recommended earlier this year, so that 3% would kick in on January 1st, as it's written in the report. I kind of misread it myself. So what you see is fees presented, and then there'd be an automatic 3% increase coming, you know, on the day that they get effectively put into place also.
Okay, go ahead. You still have the clerk?
Through the mayor to the CAO, thank you. That was all very helpful. I guess my very last point, and I'm looking for a way to address this, I'm going to go back to the VRUs. Not every community has issues with VRUs. We do, and I want to be very cautious that we're putting those numbers into our building of our houses, and then all of a sudden, they can be taken out. So we're giving preferential treatment or fast-tracking or concessions to people building residential, but then all of a sudden, they're commercial. And I know they're allowed to be there, the VRUs, because they're commercial. But we need to come up with some sort of process that if they are VRUs, that they don't get the same preferential treatment as the residential. We're going to be giving these numbers to the provincial government, saying, here, we're hitting our targets, and then all of a sudden, they're not now. I know Ms. Dolch said that we can take those numbers off if we get vacation rental unit permits. Have you looked at the website? I think there's, what, 16 or something like that? Like, it's just, we have thousands of them in the city, and there's a very small few that have actual permits. So I want to be careful when we're doing this, because I think we have a very different situation than a lot of other municipalities. They're not going to see the number of VRUs that we will, so I think we need to be careful that we're not giving benefits to people to build VRUs. And I don't know what the answer is, but I'd like to look into something. Thank you.
Yeah, staff will bring back a vacation rental, short-term rental, whatever we're going to call it, bylaw that I think will significantly restrict VRU, VRU development and current utilization. So the bylaw that we're proposing is very similar to the one that's in Toronto. And so I think, you know, with regards to new builds and tourist commercial, things that are zoned, tourist commercial, it's very hard for us, unless the developer is very explicit, that says these are going to be used for VRUs. It's very hard for us to know what they're going to be used for, because usually the developers develop them. Someone buys them and how they decide to use them, or someone might buy them for a home for one year, move out, and the next person buys them, and because they're zoned that way, it is. But I think we'll pick up a fair amount from ones that are in residential, not principal residence, you know, once we have the ability to enforce on that going forward. So I agree with you. So I, I agree with you, you know, we do have a housing issue. I think when the report comes from council, not to steal the show too much from the report coming, but there is some evidence that VRUs are actually being used in the rental market for a variety of reasons, and they're actually, people are signing, and actually, my nephew is doing this. Landlords don't want long-term lease contracts because of landlord tenancy issues, so they're actually doing short-term renewables to avoid being into a landlord tenancy agreement. So those VRUs are actually becoming de facto rental apartments, which is, is an interesting, you know, development. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. I, I agree with you to some extent. If it's going to be purpose-built for a VRU, and if we know that, we can exclude that from the housing stock, you know, going forward. But like I said, there's no, there's no way of knowing that that's not going to then be converted back to a residential, because we, we want to, you know, they would just remove their license, and it'd be a residential unit at that point in time.
You're good, okay. So I've got councillor Peter Angel, Newestag, and Thompson.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just to weigh in on the issue of fees, I want to stick with the plan that development pays for development. I don't want to go kind of backwards, where we get to the point where, you know, development is on the backs of the taxpayers. Right now, the system that we have just says that any development fees that we charge, they're going to be there to ensure that the taxpayers don't have to pay for development. That's where I like to stand. And I also wonder, Your Worship, if you wanted to, I guess, congratulate our new chief building official, who I believe that this is his first city council meeting.
Yeah.
We promoted within, congratulations to Mr. Chaka.
Lutz Chaka. Thank you for that. I've got councillor Newestag, and then Thompson.
Your Worship, I just want to say, I am...
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay. I, I appreciate that building, just like councillor Peter Angel said, building permit fees rest where they should with the builder, they're the ones benefiting, that's where it should be. I appreciate the fact that there's a reserve as well. I think that's very responsible, that we're having a reserve fund for future downturns. But I do have a question through to the, I guess through the CIO. The community improvement funds or plans that we're looking, going to be looking at, how are they going to be adjusted if, in the future, we're going to be helping incentivize new development through building fee waivers? Is that being taken into account?
Mr. CEO?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, and I'll rely on my treasure if I screw anything up. Yeah, we are, any fee waiver that we provide under a CIP program or similar program has to be accounted for. So currently, we, we essentially just look at it as a building fee write-off, but I think what we're going to do in the future is account for it as kind of an expenditure, with, show, show the revenue and show the expenditure, and that way you can evaluate, you know, what you actually, what you actually spent or incentivized to what the results are. So, so everything gets accounted for if we waive the fee.
So we, as we've just done this, are we looking, as, because these new CIPs are going to be developed, I understand we're going through a review of those. So are we taking into any consideration right now that building permit fees are definitely going to be probably part of it? Is that reserve going to be enough to cover that difference?
The reserve that this fund talks about is when we get into low building permit years, so not so much the waivers, the waivers we're going to, it can, it can handle both, but the waiver should really just be expensed on, on the account. So, so yeah, once we re, once we hit our goal where we want to be with the building fee reserve, it's something we always review just to say, what is our total cost? What would, what would be a 30% shock to our reserve? Like, if building permits went down 30%, how much of a hit is that to our reserve? And try to normalize it over a five-year period. So it's something that the team does kind of on an annual basis during their budget, to look at what the reserve levels are for, for building or planning reserves. So we, so as the, you know, as the fees go up, they're generally going up because wages are going up, which is your cost. So if you have a slow building permit time, you still have those wages. So we assess the reserves based upon the costs that are there in the system.
But for the CIP, like...
CIP, same thing, yep.
Okay, so, but we don't even know what that looks like, so we don't know, we can't even predict how many building fees that we will be...
That's correct.
Waiving. So is there anything we should be doing now, or, or can we come back and review it if we start increasing these CIPs?
We look at it every year during the budget process on where our reserves are, and kind of go from there. The target is one year in the report, I believe, is, if I remember. Annual direct cost, so that's, so we, we'll keep on monitoring that to, to set that as the goal. And we'll evaluate if we, if we see if we have too big of a hit or too much variance in our reserves, we can evaluate the target to, to change that. The hope is that we get more building permits out there, and the reserve gets a little healthier than what it is right now.
You're good, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
The complaints that I get is really from the building department. What was happening, my permit? And I, they have a time, and they don't lead that time. And, and I think the 3% is we're hiring new people to make sure to get the permits out, and I think this is, 3% is not a problem, but to get the permits and the building and the construction done, I think this is really important to do this. And did he have... Motion?
Not yet, no.
No? I would do, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I've got motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Patel. Yep, to move the recommendation, and you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. CEO. After the 3% fee increase, where do we fall in our chart for Niago region?
We're kind of upper middle of the pack, is how I would phrase it. It depends on which building permit you're looking at, but even after the 3%, we had, previously, it was the construction CPI index, which was used, but there was a lot of variability with that. So you can get like a 16% increase in one year if you use that. So, so we're trying to streamline it to be a bit more predictable on, on that. So we would still be kind of, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom. We were traditionally near the bottom, and we're trying to move our fees back up, because we were relying on a lot more tax levy subsidy for the cost.
Well, I do, I do like the idea of development pays for the development, not the taxpayer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions before I call the vote? Okay, so the motion is made by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Patel, that we approve the recommendations with a 3% increase. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that. Now on to the consent agenda. Motion by councillor Peter Angel, seconded by councillor...
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, so seconded by councillor Newestag, and you have the floor, and then I've got councillor Lukoko.
I just want to speak to, sorry, 9.2, the gateway economic. I just want to say this is wonderful. For the last year sitting here, we've talked so much about res, about housing, and, and that's been our focus, but we haven't seen a lot about new employment. And I think this is wonderful, although it's costing us a lot over time in CIP. Having 100 new full-time jobs is fantastic for us. So I just want to say what a great project that we have in front of us, and I'm thrilled that we are getting more employment and some focus on that as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Councillor Lukoko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment on 9.2 as well. I think it's an excellent program. I, I was talking to our staff today to understand a little bit more from a residential taxpayer. They might look at this report and think that we're, we're giving 94,941 dollars in rebates per year over the cost of, over the 10-year period. So that's $940,000. But I wanted to talk with our staff to explain what the benefits to our community are. So yes, we are giving some concessions at one point, but we get a lot of different benefits after. And I was speaking to Mr. Bryson, he said he would sort of give a reasoning why a regular taxpayer should look at this program in a very positive way.
Mr. Bryson, do you want to... Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just point out that this program is not a rebate or a refund, it's a tax deferment for a period of 10 years. After that period, the taxes will come in at the full rate. So it is a 90% reduction in the 10 years, and that adds up to the $940,000. So in exchange, the city gets a new development that would have not happened before. So you have a new plant, you have new, new facility there that is expected to be, continue to be used, and generate full taxes on it. Number two, we are gaining 100 jobs in total. Those are 100, you know, industrial or manufacturing jobs, not service level jobs. They tend to pay more. So people have the opportunity to stay in the city. Citizens have the, instead of commuting, they would have an opportunity to maybe apply for a job. Helps with, with, you know, the retainment of jobs for the youth. And finally, it helps with diversification. The, the city is heavily reliant on, on the tourism industry for, for employment. We, we've seen the last couple of years, you know, that when you don't get the tourists, you don't necessarily get the jobs. So this will help to diversify the employment base in the city, and just provide new opportunities for, for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Bryson, that was very good. And I just wanted to stress that we all realize that this was a very bad tax year, and we're looking at next year, but we are very conscious about what we're doing. So I just wanted to point that out, because residents are looking at that, that we're just giving away money and they're sitting at home struggling. Thank you.
And it couldn't be farther from the truth. That's not at all how CIPs work. And I know I've heard some people use the term corporate welfare. That's not at all what it is. It's incentivizing development, which in the end makes us more money than we would have had otherwise. It's just some people just don't understand. When they delve in, they understand better, appreciate that. Councillor Newestag?
Just to your point, councillor Lukoko, I want to add to it. We, I've been involved with CIP for, during that main area, and it really helped people, it spurred people on. So in terms of back to the residents, it really helps improve, and it pushes people to do things they may not have done. So I can't speak enough about CIPs. I'm looking forward to our review process and hoping that we can even do more, because it's amazing how people step up to the plate when they get a little bit of incentive. And here, we've got 100 new jobs. So going back to the residents, this is a very positive thing for our community.
Thank you for that. And, yes, councillor Patel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to know, how is the CIP grant, how is it funded?
Mr. CEO?
The tax increment grant, it's, it's, you know, essentially you're, you're essentially not taking the taxes that would have otherwise been applied. But as Mr. Bry said, you may not have ever got those taxes. So in this case, a new, you know, a new factory or expansion is undertaken. Normally, you would, you would get a, a tax increase for that. What happens is, over a 10-year period, you gradually build up the taxes for that. So the tax, the increase in taxes are kind of leveled in. So from a cash flow point of view, it was taxes we would not have normally received anyway, so therefore you don't necessarily need the cash flow. We do have to account for it though, because impact would still make the assessment. So we fund, we have, we set up allowances for these grants on an annual basis, and it comes out of our budget. So we account for everything in the budget. The challenge with these ones, though, is we try to do it over like a five-year period, because you don't know when one of these will kick in, we don't have a predictability on it. So, you know, we try to fund it over kind of a, an annual basis as an estimate for each year.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. If there's no further questions or comments, so we have the motion by councillor Peter Angel, seconded by councillor Newestag, that we received the consent agenda. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Now on to 10, communications and comments of the city clerk. Suggestion from the clerk that we do 10.1 through 10.6.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, hold on one up a second here. Okay, so 10 point... Okay, so 10.4. Did you want to lift one too, councillor?
Yes, I'd like to pull 10.5 and 10.6, please.
Anybody want to pull any other ones? Nope, okay, so why don't we start with, we'll go in order, 10.4, councillor Patel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To my understanding, the resolution we have in front of us, they're still waiting for staff report at the region level. So I would like to defer this until we see the detailed report from the regional staff, so we know what we are, what we are supporting or what we're not supporting.
Okay, so, so are you seconding that, councillor?
I will second it, and I have a couple more comments.
Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to speak to on this?
Yeah, it's because there's a couple of things I do, I do not understand or agree with is number two and 3B. Those are the two things I'd all agree with, is the one with adding certain things to, no, consulting with our Niago Regional Police to add some amendments to the criminal law. But I watched the meeting when this resolution came, and the, the motion was on the floor, and I watched the entire meeting. Most of the things were described in the meeting where almost, they, almost all of them are covered within the criminal law. You know, when it's some criminal law, for example, when it comes to harassment, or it comes to bullying someone, lots of things are covering criminal law. So I would like to see the detailed report from Niago Regional Police. I think they will be doing the report with the staff before I can support this or not support this. That's the one of the thing. And 3B is the code of conduct for citizens, I think. And I don't understand why that, that's something I'd all agree with, so I don't think I would support 3B, because as an elected official, we have code of conduct, because we ran, we ran the election, we decided to be elected officials. That's why we have to follow code of conduct. But that does not follow for the citizens, because that's the way I feel it. Because if you put code of conduct on citizens, I think we are going slippery slope, because, because of this motion, we might be trying to stop some citizens from speaking maybe, but that could turn, people can turn around, they can back far on the same people who are trying to control certain things. So that's the way I see it. So I don't agree with 3B and two, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion by councillor Patel and seconded by councillor Lukoko that we defer the approval of 10.4 until the region is finished dealing, dealing with it.
I just had other comments as well.
All right, ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think part of my confusion is it's under approvance support, so that's my questions for the next two as well. So when we're saying approvance support, it's about, talk about creating a code of conduct. So does that mean that we won't want to create a code of conduct? That's where my question is. And then it talks about creation of program to educate. Is it under approvance support because we're just going to approve what they're doing, or we bring it back to our council and creating the code of conduct and creating the educational pieces? So that, that was my first comment, to find out, is that the intention, that we are doing it also? And like councillor Patel said, it is on hold because they're waiting for staff. They're also waiting for information from the chief of police as well.
He's going to be making a personal presentation?
Right. So can anybody answer my question, is the intention that we are implementing it as well?
Okay, we'll go to the clerk and try to get some answers.
If you'll notice specifically, under the recommendation of 10.4, it was just for council's consideration and support. I know traditionally, we kind of group all of these together, looking for approval. But this one, and there's actually a few under this section, where it was just for your consideration. So to answer your question more specifically, it would not be for city staff to come up with these policies, or, you know, looking to, for a citizen code of conduct or anything like that. It would just merely be offering the support towards the region based on their resolution that's proposed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. That, that explains then, I'll talk to, about the other ones later. I'm in support of deferring this as well until we have some more information.
Okay. Well, if there's no further, further comments on this at this point, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of deferral? Okay, okay, that's approved unanimously. So now we'll go to councillor Lukoko for 10.5.
Thank you. Again, going back to the town of Ford Erie, requesting the region to stay at 3.7 or, or not to, to go below. Again, if we support that, are we sending a letter to the region to say we believe, don't go any higher than 3.7?
Well, I think by supporting this, you're sending your support that you agree the rate of inflation, whatever it is at the time, right? Like, I mean, it's been, it's been floating a little bit, but... Like, I mean, it's been floating a little bit, but I think there, you know, the, and here's part of the problem. Last year's rate of inflation was 8.1, right? And it's recently been, you know, in the threes. And so, yeah, that's the question. If you agree with that and really, like, does the region pay that much attention to what the resolutions are? I'd say probably not. Most resolutions don't get paid attention to because they're easy to send. They're easy to dismiss.
Some do.
Yeah, some do, but I'd suggest not too much.
So I would suggest for 10.5 to receive and file?
Okay, so why don't we deal with that one at that point then? So we've got a motion from Counselor LaCoco to receive and file a resolution from the town of Ford Erie regarding the operating budget. You agree with that? Seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion to that? All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? Okay?
And then the 10.6, again, it's under approvance support. This is talking about short-term rentals and the things that they're doing, but registered framework for those to complete with municipal planning, a license registration, preventing advertising. I know our staff have been working on many different ways of dealing with the VRUs. Again, I would like to receive and file this one instead of approving. But I do want to bring up something that happened last night. There was a fire on Queen Street and I heard it was a vacation rental unit. And as people were watching it, I was thinking, if you were a tourist in there and there was a fire, would you know where the address is? Would you know where you were? Like, you probably got the address to go there, but would you know in that moment of anxiety to call the fire department to say there's a fire there? So, you know, when you're in motel rooms, there's something on the back of the door with instructions about where to go where there's a fire. And I guess this goes to the permitting as well because they were saying, display the permitting. Maybe the address of the vacation rental unit could be put on the back of the door so that the people would know where they were.
Maybe we'll ask our chief if he wants to weigh in because I know he always likes to weigh in on things like this.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to the counselor. So for B&amp;B, because we license the B&amp;Bs, there are requirements to actually have floor plans of the floor layout, where the bedrooms are, et cetera, and your means of egress. So because VRU is, we're not always privy to where they are and how they look to the homes and all. We've had many discussions in this chambers with regards to the problems we're having with VRUs. If we had a good handle with the VRUs, we could implement something like that to, like we, similarly, like we do for our B&amp;Bs where we would have floor plans, know your exits, call 911 and the address. So, but unfortunately, we're not there yet with the VRUs.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to put it out there because I sat there and wondered as I watched this fire go on, would I know if I was a visitor and I was in a VRU, would I know what the address was? Obviously, if there's other businesses around, hopefully someone else will call. But would I know the address? So I thought we're talking, looking at things about posting a permit. It could be very easy to put the address on there and floor plan like the chief said.
It's not a bad idea. Food for thought.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. So I would receive and file 10.6 as well.
Motion by Counselor LaCoco to receive 10.6. The other resolution from the town of Perry Sound. Secondary, looking for a secondary, just to receive it. Counselor Patel, if there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. So that just leaves us 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3. Okay, so Counselor Peter Angelo made the motion. And you're seconding for the last, the other three, receiving them? Counselor Thompson? The other consent agenda items. We're just receiving them. Okay, so seconded by Counselor Thompson. And this would be, number one is 10.1, Proclaiming Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th. Proclaiming Mike Glavitch Day, Wednesday, December the 6th in Niagara Falls. And number three, Proclamation of Long Cancer Awareness Month for November of this year. So there's a motion. Did you want to speak to it?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yes, please, go ahead, Counselor Newsteg.
Just, I just want to take one moment and thank the Mike and probably not going to say it as well as you did, Glavitch Day.
Glavitch, yeah.
Just as a board member of the foundation, how grateful we are that he donated a million dollars to the new South Niagara Hospital. So just a comment to say thank you. We've been doing so well with donations from people and huge donations are coming through. So just very grateful for it.
No, I appreciate that, Counselor, that you're bringing it up. And he's such a humble man.
And the story is incredible.
It is. And he's still that way. He's more interested in making you happy and serving you than himself. And he apologized that it was such a small check. So anyway, humble, sweet, nice, interesting. He's really changed the landscape of Niagara Falls and his story is just amazing. You know, how he, you know, he built the Americana, the Arcona, Tropicana. You know, he owned the land that the Pyramid Place was on, like where Freshco is, like that whole subdivision. You know, like, he's done an awful lot. And like you said, he's given everything away. He doesn't, you know, unbelievable.
It's wonderful. And especially even for the Serbian, the new Serbian Hall. And so many people have been enjoying it. We've had these barbecues there. So it's just a wonderful story, but I just want to say thank you as a board member of how grateful we are for it.
Appreciate that. Thank you for that. Counselor Patel?
Actually, he has donated in Europe, especially in Serbia, about 10 million euros. He has built schools, bridges, and lots of other things in a community where he was born and raised. And I saw his daughter at the Serbian Hall and I thanked her for the donation. And she said that nowadays you can only buy maybe one house, so it's not a big deal. That's how humble they are. I think a million dollar donation is a big donation, but for her, it's just a one house. That's what she said.
Unbelievably humble.
Yes, they are.
And generous. Yeah, yeah, they're beautiful. They really are beautiful people. So appreciate it. Proud to be a part of proclaiming that day, Mike Glavitch Day on December the 6th. So we will call the vote. Yes?
Counselor Campbell had his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. Okay. Counselor Campbell, did you want to say something?
So I'm going to do the red area. I've had it out there for a while.
He did? Oh, I'm sorry. You guys got to point that out. I don't always look there. I didn't even, actually, I didn't even think to look there. Now he's ignoring me. Okay, well, I deserve that. I deserve that. So, all right. So Counselor Campbell, I apologize if you're listening. Maybe you're upset and you turned your computer off now, but just put your hand back up and we'll pay attention for it. All right, so we've got the motion. See, I'm already all confused now. Who made the motion now? That was moved by? By Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. So we'll call the vote for the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm not even there yet. Okay, communications. Motion to receive and file by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by? Okay, give me one second here, 11.6. Okay, let's deal with the ones you're opposed with first. Okay. Oh, yeah, that's just, do you want to be on the record as opposed? Okay. 11 point?
I just want to point it out that there's a House of Commons passed a bill that's C-22. It's the royal ascend in June 2023 that actually covers the basically entire thing they're talking about in this resolution.
Okay. So there's a resolution from the county of Brant regarding a guaranteed livable income. And the motion is to receive. So you're going to vote against it. So you want to make a motion to receive and file, Counselor Peter Angelo?
That's the motion for all.
For all of them? Okay. But we're going to, I'm just going to vote on that one first because she wants to be on record as against it. Okay, can I get a second? Or Counselor Baldinelli, you had your hand up? You okay to second that? Okay? Well, we're just voting on 11.6. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so we've got two opposed. And the balance? Thank you, Counselor Peter Angelo. Okay, so Counselor Newsteg, Patel, and Thompson are against 11.6. So now motion by Counselor Peter Angelo for the remainder of the communications and comments of the city clerk. Seconded by Counselor Strange. There's no further comments. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That's to receive. Thank you. We move along to 12. Communications and comments of the city clerk. Okay, so, sorry, let me just get caught up here. Yes, Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The top five recommendations we're going to be sending to the province. I would, I'd like to put a motion forward that we request from the province that information back from all the municipalities to see what other top five issues that the municipalities are stating.
So you're saying, here's ours. Can we get a summary list?
Correct, of everybody else's.
Okay, so you're going to make the recommendation with that added on then or make the motion?
Actually, I'm opposed to it because I've been opposed to things before. So I'm going to oppose the whole thing, but I want to put a motion forward to have all of the results given back to us.
Okay.
So I won't put the motion forward.
Okay, so first we'll deal with, okay, is there any other comments to this, this one, 12.1?
No, I covered my VRU developers' fast tracking. I covered that in the other one.
Okay. So what's the will of council for 12.1? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, first of all, thanks to staff. I know this was, I guess, something that the province put out to every municipality that is part of this housing strategy, asking their planning departments to identify the top five recommendations towards them. And our planning staff put this together on our behalf to let the province know what's important to us. One of the comments that I had, I think it was last meeting when we were talking about the quarterly building reports, was, you know, it's fine to have this housing strategy and say that Niagara Falls has to build this many units, but we can only approve these units. We can't actually build them ourselves. And that's in our recommendations, Your Worship. If you look under recommendation number 56 and you take a look at the comment underneath that, it says, "It should be noted that while the city can address procedures to efficiently bring projects to a shovel-ready status, the actual construction of projects depends on the private sector. And it's recommended that further measures to encourage the private sector to develop vacant lands that are shovel-ready be considered by the province." So we're kind of calling upon the province to do something to incentivize developers to actually get the shovels in the ground. We can give the approvals. We can get the infrastructure there so that they're shovel-ready, but it's up to the private sector, Your Worship, to actually build these units. I had a comment as well on recommendation number 38, which talks about clearing the backlog at the OLT. I'm just wondering if staff can tell us what the current backlog is. I didn't think that it was that much, to be honest with you, because I thought I had heard that the province had gone out and hired, I thought it was 60 more judges to clear the backlog. So the backlog was pretty clear at this point. I know, you know, there's been decisions that are getting in front of the OLT in two to three months, you know. So maybe staff can tell us what the backlog is there.
Sure. Mr. Bryce, any insight into the OLT backlog?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for flagging that. We did have a consent application in July that was denied and appealed. And that's going to council or basically the OLT in November. So that's four months. You know, our experience in the past, it's been upwards of a year or more. So things do seem to be, I'd just like to just acknowledge that these recommendations, these HATF recommendations are about a year and a half old now. So it might not reflect the current status of things. But unfortunately, I don't know what the backlog is at the province. We've not been communicated that or from the OLT. But things seem to be moving a bit faster now.
Okay. Thanks, Your Worship. I guess my comment was going to be, if there's not a real big backlog, then perhaps it's not one of our top five. That's all. But I'll leave that with our, with our planning department. I wanted to talk about recommendation 51. I know it says to enable municipalities subject to adverse economic conditions to pull infrastructure if nothing has been done in three years. And our comment is, consideration should also be given to enable municipalities to withdraw infrastructure to anyone who hasn't started within three years. Is the difference there just one says adverse economic situations and the other one says, no, this should be carte blanche? I mean, if a project hasn't been started in three years, then the municipality should have the right to pull on the infrastructure project and go put it somewhere else so that they can help some other housing development get off. Is that what I'm understanding by number 51, Your Worship?
Mr. Bryce, do you want to add on that one as well?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the, it was specifically, we specified specific applications, zoning, site plan, subdivisions. Just to have it clarified that those, you know, projects, we should be able to withdraw infrastructure allocations from.
Okay. Regardless, Your Worship, I think it's a valid point. If we have a project that we approved and we don't see anything happening on the project within three years, yet it's been slated for brand-new water mains, brand-new sewers. We have another project that's ready to go. We should be able to transfer those infrastructure funds and go with the one that's ready to go. The last point I wanted to make, Your Worship, is recommendation 53 talks about funding for colleges and universities. I think it's pretty spot-on considering that Niagara Falls is going to be welcoming our university in, you know, the beginning of 2024. So happy to support those recommendations, Your Worship. If you need a motion to approve them, I'll gladly approve them. Outside of those five recommendations, it's nice to see that staff put in there that we still need that sewage plant in the south end of Niagara Falls to go forward in order to achieve these housing, I guess, goals. So thanks, Your Worship.
Okay, so the motion by Counselor Peter Angelo? So you're moving the report? Seconded by Counselor Newsteg. Are there any other comments to the report? I think, yes, go ahead, Counselor Patel?
I don't know if it's against the report, but this recommendation 45 is trade schools funding? There's lots of free funding available out there. A friend of mine, she's in her late 30s, mother of three. She actually got her framing certification during the summer in two months. And everything was done. She got everything done free. And she's actually working as a framer, building houses. I'm personally very proud of her. But there's lots of fundings and lots of free programs available, but there's not enough advertisement or knowledge to the public about these programs. So I'm not sure if we can put the recommendation in that to promote these programs in high schools or even employment centers. That's what I would like to say. I'm not sure, Ms. Counselor Peter Angelo, if he knows there's something in a high school that they are promoting these programs. I'm not sure about that. But if we can put recommendation in there to promote it more because there's lots of grants are available out there. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Peter Angelo, any?
Yeah, I mean, that's not part of the recommendation that came out of the housing strategy, Your Worship, but I'm happy to add in there, you know, promotion of apprenticeship programs.
Okay, good. And second, the secondary, you're good with that too? Okay? Okay, got it? So if there's no further comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, with one opposed? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
And then my motion about requesting the province to advise us of all of the top five of the other municipalities.
Okay. Motion by Counselor LaCoco to ask the province to give us a summary of the top five within the province. So once they collect all the data? We should be, but it's harmless. I don't think it's possible. Okay, seconded by Counselor Patel. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? Okay, that's approved. Thank you for that. So that was 12.1. Now on to 12.2, Niagara Falls Library Memo Attached. Recommendation that the current vacancy on the Niagara Falls Public Library Board be filled by Michael Freeman.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Patel. Any discussion to the motion? Saying none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. Now in camera, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, your worship, council met in closed section, in closed session on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, after publicly passing a resolution in open session to go in camera. At this meeting, there was direction to staff to obtain outside legal counsel regarding an OLT matter, as well as provide staff with direction regarding council's strategic plan, which is to be presented at the October twenty-fourth council meeting. Also, council met in camera earlier today, and there was direction given to staff to continue to negotiate a proposed or pending acquisition of land by the municipality.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve in camera. Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor Newsteg. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Now we move on to motions, item fourteen. First one is fourteen point one, a motion, public safety, Welland River. So Counselor Newsteg is, served her notice of motion. Did you want to read that out, Counselor?
Um, I'm notifying, oh, sorry. I'm notifying council of my intent to bring a motion to the next council meeting to request, and this is the motion, that staff bring a report to see how the city and other appropriate agencies can improve public safety in the Welland River, AKA the Chippewa Creek. As we know, there has been a tragic death recently in the river, and I believe a review of what the city can do is appropriate undertaking for this council and the city. I want to say that it's not, by no means do I want to take away the fun that people enjoy with summer activities in the creek, I just want to know how we can make it safe. And to add to it, when city, when staff is doing their report, if they can even reach out to the people who use it, because they're the best source, source of information, like the people, the boat, the boaters there, the people launch their boats, the, the people at Tim Hortons where they have the boat dock as well, and just to see how we can, how everybody can still enjoy all the summer activities there, but just do it without any fatalities. It's just, just every year seems like we've got one or every other year. So just finding out why this is happening and seeing what precautions we can do to keep us all safe.
Okay, now.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Clerk, I know Counselor Thompson wants to speak of us. Procedurally, next step, Ben?
And we've given notice to the public by way of notice of motion that this would be on the agenda, so, you know, it's open for discussion. Council can, you know, provide further direction if, if necessary, and/or just approve the motion for staff to come back with that report.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, and then LaCoco?
We would have years ago, people drowning in the, because of the water and the, the.
Current.
The moving, and, and anybody who was going in there had better be a good swimmer. And we made the, the decision, Saint Ambulance, Ambulance, they have a building right on the creek, and they're growing up every day in the summer to, and they said of so many time, people that have been saved from drowning by those, and we pay them every year to, to do that great. And you said today that your daughter was doing that for a couple of years, and I think we have one or two drownings a year for that property is amazing. And if we're gonna debate that, I would like to have the same ambulance people here to say what they're doing and what they, how many people have drowned, and how many people have saved. So I, I think there, we need more sign with the boats going through there, creating the, the waves for the docks and for swimmers. And if, if I had a property there and a dock, and I couldn't believe the, the boats going, speeding there. And the other thing is the, the, if you sit across from Tim Hortons with the dock, and you see the kids going off the bridge every day, and I, they're, no, they're not supposed to be doing, and why we haven't had somebody hit a boat going, jumping off the bridge, unbelievable. I think we can do some additional, but I think we've done a great job with the same ambulance, Saint John's, the lambs, yeah. Anyway, and I would like to have somebody if we're, and get the statistics about, about the drowning and saving people. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think that'll probably, and Chief, I don't know if I can call on you, because I know the Saint John Ambulance River Patrol work closely with the fire department as well, and you've got, I think you've got one of your boats down there as well.
And the region police.
And, yeah. And so now, with this motion, notice of motion, would we be getting insight from everybody, like fire, Saint John Ambulance, police, just, just to confirm for Counselor Thompson, that that'll be part of what we're gathering?
Yes, thank you, through you, your worship, to Counselor. I already reached out to the emergency services, I reached out to the Niagara Regional Police, Niagara Parks Police, and OPG, and we're gonna be scheduling a meeting very shortly to talk about the, you know, the up-and-coming notice of motion, obviously it was company, and, and see what we can do over and above what we're already doing with the Saint John's Ambulance. So, and I, I will add that we do annual training with the Saint John's staff, with our marine units that, that responded of Station Four in Chippewa on an annual basis. It's always nice to refresh our skills, because we know what's coming when the, when the summer months come. So, we'll definitely work on the report and, and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, I brought up a motion about a community safety committee, and I know that.
Well, we still, we're still dealing with this one, if I can just get.
Well, it, it, it has to do with this.
To do this, okay.
Yes. I, I, I brought that up, and the CAO was going to talk to the Niagara Regional Police, and he said he would update us. There is a grant, this does have to do with this, and I'm looking at it as a whole. If, if we look at community safety, it's a whole bunch of things. It's the Chippewa Creek, it's, it's shootings, it's stabbings, it's bicycle, bicycle issues, it's safety in your home. I, I'd like to see this as a whole thing, and I'm wondering if the, the CAO can bring a report back at the same time for the, the safety, the community safety committee at that, at that point. But there is a grant that's due on October twenty-second. It's not about the creek, but it's about safety. It's Safer Communities. It's due October twenty-second. Our next meeting is October twenty-fourth. Is there a way that we can get some information prior to that, to see if there's a possibility to put that grant in? I was very loosely speaking with, with the, with the CAO, but he had that meeting, so could I get an update on that, please?
Just you.
Oh, yeah, that grant is usually submitted by Niagara Regional Police on their guns and gangs item, so the last, last year, we did not have any projects, because none of our crime activity was high enough for those specific ones to submit. We had previously submitted for downtown cameras, and were successful with that one, but last year, the NRP didn't think that there was any viable projects for it. And they're the ones who normally initiate that grant process for the, for the various municipalities.
Okay, so.
I got you.
If that was last, through, through the chair, if that was last year, so is that what they're saying for this grant, that they wouldn't, moving forward? Okay. Um, based on that, for that, that grant, so push that grant aside, but the other part of it was safety, safety in the community, could we get that report as part of this report to come back at the same time?
I will try. I know the meeting is being scheduled, so I just don't know what the schedule of the meeting is versus the chief's meeting, so I, I'm gonna apologize for not knowing what was the time for that meeting, because I think it was with Niagara Regional Police. We've had some preliminary discussions with them. Crime stoppers is the other one that we're going to work with, because I think that's maybe better aligned for the community safety issues that you were dealing with, and I was more taking, Counselor, from your, from the initial council meeting that you requested, that I thought it was more of a crime security issue that you were concerned about, especially in the downtown core, so that's where I was dealing more with Niagara Regional Police, and, and will set that meeting up. If it's a broader one, we may, I might bring in the chief for other safety and security measures, but I was more thinking it was a policing matter that you needed to, to be dealt with. So I'll have that meeting, and I'll find out when the meeting is scheduled for.
Thank you. It is part of the policing, but it's part of just community safety in general. It is broad, it can be anything from bicycle safety. We had unfortunate incident that a bicyclist was hit in Chippewa, so there was that. There's been, as you say, police involvement, but there, there was three stabbings, there was a shooting. There's a lot of things that people can be doing within their own house and with their own family to be more safe. So, you know, yes, the police get involved, but there are things that we can be doing as a community. So I, I, I would like it to be all part of community safety, and the Chippewa Creek can be part of it along with these other things.
In, in fairness, this is a motion by Counselor Newsteg, so grouping it together isn't part of her motion. So I think in fairness, we should be dealing with this motion on its own, and then not trying to put a square peg in a round hole and adding on to it. I don't know, you know, I think, I've given you some latitude, but I think we gotta bring it back to this motion, that if there's some different direction you want to go in something else, fair enough. I just don't think we should be maybe pulling the Chippewa Creek issue and putting it in with the other one. I think it's a standalone issue that Counselor brought forward.
Fair enough. My motion was to bring back a report, so I'm asking, can this information?
Yep.
Because I had my motion last time as well to bring that information, so I'd like that information to come. I don't want it being pushed aside and, and just one issue being dealt with. I'd like it all to come together.
I agree, and I understand, but like I say, this is a separate motion, so I don't know that we can clump them together. If it works out, great, but she's making.
Yeah, I'm just asking for the information that was approved last time to come as well.
It's on her, it's on her tracking list.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak to this motion, Counselor Thompson?
Yes. I was gonna bring up Andy, and has nothing to do with the Chippewa. For two years, the Fallsview BIA have been trying to deal with the police and to get cameras in the, all of the Fallsview Hotels and the casino. That's where the, the stabbing and the drugs and the problems of illegal act, and they would like the police to put up cameras in that area. It has nothing to do with the Chippewa Creek. And anyway, I would like to make a motion that we refer this, this to the CAU, and we have Sue Mingle was with, with the Fallsview BI, and working with Guy Payone, who was in security up there in the Fallsview, to try to get the cameras up there to, to find out what happens with people fighting, killing, and all kinds. That's where the problems are, and, and I would like to have, we've been working on this for two years, and I heard that there's a provincial money coming down, and that's where we need cameras, and the businesses up there really need them, in, anyway.
Okay, well, we can deal with that in a moment. We're just dealing right now with the motion for Counselor Newsteg for the Chippewa Creek. Did you want to second it, Counselor?
I, I will second it.
Thank you.
I want to talk to it. And I think we should be sticking with this motion. I'm coming back, sir. That she brought up. This is a notice of motion from last month to bring this up, so I think it's a great motion. And, you know, I think the chief, and for years, there's been votes down there, and I think people are down there and saving lives. I think there's more lives saved than we can even count, day to day, but people don't realize how dangerous that creek is. Like, years ago, we used to jump off the break wall, we're crazy, just, you know, in the undertow, and, and the current is just, just crazy, and you think you can go there without a life jacket, or swim across, and there's not a chance. And people daring each other and stuff like that. And I think, because I think we, we can do all we can to save people's lives, like the chief was talking about with, with, with the police, with the Parks Police, with Saint John's Ambulance, and I, I'd like to see the more of the awareness, and, and whether it's on social media, and telling people how dangerous the Chippewa Creek is, because it really is dangerous. You don't realize the pull. People go out and they, they get, they bring their rafts down, no, no lifeguard, like life jackets or anything on, it's so dangerous, you can just fall off, and that's it. You can drown within twenty seconds, and, and it's gonna be kind of impossible, especially if it's dark, to save someone. So I like the motion, but I like to add it, if we can, and, and maybe with the chief, we can, we can add more of a, an awareness of how dangerous this is, and, and the timing, and, and all that sort of stuff, that it can just change, just like that, within seconds. So people trying to jump off the bridge, or jump off the break wall, which we used to do, and, and, you know, jumping off a dock there, and, and thinking that there's no, not gonna be any circumstance where you're gonna find yourself in trouble. Well, it's very, very, very dangerous down there, so maybe even awareness or signage could be added to that motion, because I think it's a lot to do with awareness as well, and telling these kids, like, if you're going down there, make sure you have a, you know, a life jacket on, or somebody working in pairs, or whatever we're gonna do that way, because, you know, the boat and the safety is not always gonna be there when somebody's swimming, and, and somebody's always gonna be swimming there, but I think it's more about awareness if we can do that as well, and add that to the motion.
Yeah, okay, got that. And I apologize, Counselor Baldenelli, I skipped over you to go to Counselor Strange, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you. So Counselor Baldenelli, you have the floor.
I'm in agreement, through you, Chair, with, with, with Ann's motion. I'm a strong swimmer. I used to go down to Queenston and dive in and float down Chippewa, used to dive down there all the time. I'm actually a driver as well. And floating by one time, I started panicking and got caught up in some seaweed, weeds, and found that I was only in two feet of water, but I panicked. I was floating, and then they started rapping, and I'm, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, I can't believe this. And then there was, I was just there in shallow water. But we did have residents who were concerned, John Lepena, specifically wanting signage down there, which is in where you were going with it. Signage is so important. They were trying, he was trying to communicate with the OPG and whoever controlled the waterways for the signage for no wake speed limits, but specifically signage so that you could be located. If you went down, you know, where, what marker were you near? And that hasn't happened yet, and I'm, you know, I don't know why it takes so long to have something like this. They're all safety concerns, and you can't stop drowning, because just like you said, my cousin two years ago died, it was thirty seconds, and he, he sunk, he sunk. I mean, there's nothing you can do once it happens. It's specifically where is it that you can get them, right? So I'm in total agreement with it, the safety, signage, like Mike said, you know, preventative measures are always welcome, and maybe the bridge has to be, you know, I drove off that bridge as well, and it's fun, it was fun back then, but maybe it's time to have that stopped as well. I think that the less people who jump in, and more people who wade in and, and enjoy it that way, the less fatalities we'll have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on the notice of motion? Okay, seeing none, so it's moved by Counselor Newsteg, seconded by Counselor Strange. We'll call the vote on the notice with the addition of the public awareness campaign as part of it, if you're comfortable, okay with that? Yes? Okay. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? comfortable, okay with that? Yes? Okay. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that is unanimous. Thank you for that. And 4.2, Counselor Baldinelli. You've got your notice of motion as well. Did you want to speak to it?
This was just in to reconsider. At the time that we voted on it, we had two parcels or two pieces. One on each, I guess, east and west side of Stanley. One was more industrial development area. And the other one was actually by the Cyanamid. And the more I looked at, I'd rather have had it split. The Cyanamid area, my uncle worked there for 45 years, but I'm looking at it now and the area could use development. Obviously, they do the core sampling. It's just like the development. That just happened south of the arena already. They built a bunch of apartments. I'm not sure if they're apartments or condos there. And across the street where I played ball hockey and everybody else played ball hockey, which seemed to be safe at the time to play ball hockey there. And it's quite a distance, not like a distance, a lot of distance, but a distance away from where the Cyanamid parking lot was and where supposedly the ground studies were already done for the arena. Now, I'm sure that the residents there don't want that to be industrial. I don't know if they want someone to build an industrial plant there. I think that they would be more comfortable with some kind of housing development that could fit perfectly fine there. So I think that we should just reconsider so that we can split it up and decide on each side versus the whole thing at once. I was against the west side because of the oil treatment or whatever it is, petroleum area that was there before. And I listened to the gentleman who spoke about it. There are certain considerations there, plus what's developed there. On the other side, it's housing now and the housing was developed there basically to be close to where he worked. And now that is being supposedly cleaned up, I'm sure, and they're going to do these studies. I'm sure that we wouldn't leave it toxic forever. I think that there should be a reconsideration on each of those sides separately versus as a whole.
Okay, so you're asking for a motion for reconsideration of the report and for them to be split?
Correct.
Okay, so now-
We had them all bunched in as, as one in that motion.
Yep, we did. And that is seconded by Counselor Thompson. And I'm going to ask the clerk to guide us through this.
Before we go any further, the seconder would need to be someone that was in favor of the original motion. And Counselor Thompson was opposed to the original motion. So we would need a different seconder for the motion to reconsider.
Could it be Counselor Strange?
Yes, it could. Oh, sorry.
I-
He was, sorry, he was not, he was absent from that meeting, so cannot be Counselor Strange.
Against it to-
No, you had to have been for it.
What?
You had to have been for it.
No, I spoke to, and that's residential. No.
So the motion last time was to deny, and he voted?
I didn't-
He opposed to the denial.
Right.
If that makes any sense.
I know, it's a double negative.
Yes.
So you can't vote on, you can't be the one to second it. It won't allow, the procedural bylaw won't allow that. So-
And Counselors, Counselors Peter Angelo and Strange were absent, so we would need somebody to second it that was-
Who is that though?
That could be the remainder.
But who?
Anyone else. Anyone else except those three. Counselors Thompson, Peter Angelo and Strange could not be the seconder on this motion.
So it could be who? That, everybody else?
Anybody else.
Well, I thought I voted against the motion to have industrial and I, and now supporting residential. That's appropriate.
No, but we can't, because the clerks can explain again. You can't second this.
To better explain it perhaps, I'll just quote from the procedural bylaw. It must be moved and seconded by counselors that voted with the majority in the matter that's to be reconsidered. Counselor Thompson did not vote with the majority last time. He was in opposition. So we need someone to second it that was with the majority.
I was in support.
I know, but you weren't, I know, I know what you're saying. You were, but you can't second it based on our procedural bylaw. So-
That's ridiculous. Let's change the bylaw.
Well, we could look at that later on, just not right at the moment. Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Baldinelli. Is there a seconder to the motion? And we were going to need two thirds, is that right too?
The voting starts.
If the voting starts. Yes, Counselor Newesteg?
That was a very difficult one because the two separate areas were distinct and they were lumped together. In voting, I very much favored the gentleman that spoke that had the, his business there. And I was very concerned about switching it to residential, what it would do to him and the number of employees that he had. So there, that was my justification for voting in that way. If we're splitting it, then we have two different issues here. So I, I would be open to having it reconsidered.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, you have your second?
Yes, we would simply take the vote because, again, the procedural bylaw does not allow for debate. It only allowed for the person that is introducing the motion to provide some reasoning. So you can, you can vote on the matter?
Our CAO is going to just get some clarity.
Okay.
We're going to vote in a minute.
I can, yeah.
Yeah, then you will be able to.
So just for, just for clarity, the motion to reconsider is, is the actual motion from the August 15th meeting. The fact that council may or may not want to split that, that will be decided if it comes back to council. So if council decides to actually reconsider, it'll be part of your motion at a future meeting, as the Director of Planning has stated in his memo. Should council decide to reconsider, it's decision to the OPA 157, a future public meeting of council with a recommendation report will be scheduled and notice shall be provided in accordance with the Planning Act, including all, to all persons that provided comments and appeared at the previous council public meeting. So it's like starting all over again. And in that meeting, should you get that, to that point, it's then that you could split the motion and decide whether or not you're going to look at the two properties separately. That really doesn't come into play with tonight's motion. Tonight's motion is merely to reconsider or not to reconsider. We do have a mover and a seconder appropriately. And if there's no further questions about the procedure, you could, America called the vote.
Are there any questions about the procedure? Does everyone understand?
Thank you. So are there any questions of the, of the procedure or does everybody understand what the clerk just said? Everyone, yes, Counselor Strange?
Now we can move on.
Yes, correct. Okay, now, the motion, do you want to read, so the motion, Mr., is it, the motion is to reconsider the matter?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion, it's been moved by Counselor Baldinelli and seconded by Counselor Newesteg. And the vote now is to reconsider the matter. Okay, we're going to call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four, five. So that passes. Okay, so, or wait, did they need two thirds?
We need two thirds. So I would, I would like to know how Counselor Campbell is voting. Because in order, if he's, if he's not on, then we only have eight participating. We would need six. Your vote does count, Mr. Mayor, should you wish to-
I'm willing to have it reconsidered. If, do we need a recorded vote for that?
No. You could simply vote at any time. Procedural bylaw allows for that. So if you're voting to reconsider, that brings the number then to six in favor, which is two thirds.
No, that's not a strong mayor plan, right?
Nope.
Just to be clear, just want to be clear.
That is just one of the eight, in this case, votes that are on the table tonight. So six out of eight is, is more than two thirds majority.
More than 66.6%. Yeah, okay. So I will support having it come back for reconsideration. I haven't made a decision on what side. I'm going to follow on later, but I will support that. So, so that supports your, your motion, Counselor Baldinelli, and your second, Counselor Newesteg. So we will be reconsidering it. And Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, did you already tell us when or do we not know at this point when?
We could look to the Director of Planning there to give us a timeline. As his memo stated, it just said it would be a future meeting. I'm not sure if a date is set.
You don't have to commit. I'm just asking, will it be the next one or probably not? No.
Yes, through you, your worship. I would say more likely the November meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Loco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to Mr. Bryce, in that report, when you bring it back, could you also bring back what could be built on the Fourth Avenue site if it's industrial? What kind of industrial development could be there? You don't need to answer now, but could you bring that in the report so we could, would understand what could be built there?
Yes, through you, your worship, we can have a summary on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we're good on that issue, Mr. Clerk?
Okay.
Okay, so let me just see where we're at. Okay. So is there any other notices of motion? Okay. Or new business? Is there any new business? Yes, Counselor Loco?
Just one quick one. I sit on the Accessibility Committee and we were talking about winter weather and the snow plowing of the sidewalks and the light signals to cross streets. And we were talking about that there's 116 signal lights within, in the city. And a lot of times, there's snow pushed up against it and people can't reach the button in order to cross the street. So we're talking about different things about what to do. And then I remembered about the Adopt a Fire Hydrant program that Counselor Strange brought up. And then we discussed that, you know, maybe there's some other safety issues that the, the signals are closer to the road compared to fire hydrants, that sort of thing. So I was wondering if maybe staff could just come back with some ideas. Could we have an Adopt a Signal program that people could shovel around there? What kind of safety issues? What liability? I know we dealt with liability for the Adopt a Fire Hydrant program, but do you have some ideas about how we could better clear the snow for the signal areas?
So who of the staff liked to make eye contact with me? So I know you're ready to answer. Would this be Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We do anticipate bringing back a report on sidewalk snow clearing, which is an overdue topic to come back with. If council wants to send us in that, with that direction, we can come back with a report on some, our current standard, current levels of service standards for intersection sidewalk clearing, snow clearing. And we can come back with some options on how that could be improved.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, I've got, oh, I've got a list going here, sorry. Counselor Thompson, I've got Baldinelli, Strange, Peter Angelo.
I would like to make a motion for the Fallsview BI for cameras and for all of the stabbing and, and the-
Yep. Send it to the police for the CCTs?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So how do we do that? We do that-
I can just take it as direction to-
Okay, so the staff-
It's a notice of motion. You want the debate next year or next month, the vote on it. I can just do it.
So he'll take that as direction to staff to-
You've heard this before. Yeah, okay.
Same for downtown motion?
Yeah, the downtown, yeah.
The downtown one, the one, a grant two years ago, so. We tied it in with the police. Yep.
Okay, so we've got that, Counselor Thompson. So that's direction to staff. They're going to follow up.
Okay. And I have one more. I would like to have a motion about the rats and in the city.
He's not pointing at you. Where is he?
We have a serious problem for years.
Dirty rats, yes.
And I remember motion, motion years ago to the, the rats was so bad that we passed $200 for everybody who had rodents in there. And I was with the Health Department for years and we would go there for one complaint with rats. And we would do the entire block to find out where they're getting water, food, people not looking after their garbage and solve all the problems. And I, I, I can't believe what we're still putting up. And the, I went to the Ryerson College for the, my Health Department. And we were told and study how we would, rats problems. And, and the Health Department did for years. And they never said anybody to, we're not going to do this anymore. And that's when it got really bad again. And I would like to make a motion to the region and the Health Department to take on the responsible to complaints regarding rats. And, and I think that they, we are thinking about hiring two or three people here and they have no idea about how to solve the problem. And the Health Department has responsibility. And I would like to put them on the spot and make sure that they get back in the situation with rats, rodents. Okay, yes.
Yeah, okay. So now, Mr. Clerk, I need a little bit of help. Not to put her on the spot, but Regional Counselor Joyce Morocco, who's co-chair of Public Health at the region just happens to be, so she's hearing the conversation. So now, give me a little direction here now. Can we do, get relief from the procedural bylaw to send something to the region, Mr. Clerk? Like, how can we do that? Because it doesn't sound like it's a contentious issue here.
I didn't want to hear, I want to hear from the region.
No, I know, but we got to send a request to the region. But you need to give notice of motion the month before. So I'm trying to avoid that so we could do it now. So I'm asking the clerk how to do it. Right. So, Mr. Clerk, how would we do it?
Yes, part of that motion could just be to waive the procedural bylaw for that notice of motion requirement.
Okay. So we got a motion by Counselor Thompson to give relief of the procedural bylaw, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we ask the regional public health to get back in the business of taking care of the rat and rodent problem in the region. Is that right?
Yes.
Like, like back when you worked for the public health? That's how it used to be?
Absolutely.
Okay. And this has nothing to do with Counselor Baldinelli specifically, just your motions. Want to be clear?
Well, it's part of his problem.
No, I know that. He was, I know. Okay, so if there, is there any questions to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, Counselor Thompson. So we're good. Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Baldinelli, and then Strange and Peter Angelo.
Thank you, through you. I had mentioned in previous meetings, well, we had actually, we were informed about these cameras the region was putting up at two locations within Niagara Falls. I'm not, I'm not sure if they're moving them around. We were specifically told one at the corner or at the stoplight at Dunn and Stanley. To my current knowledge, I don't, I haven't seen it happen there. I don't- I don't know if it's a troubled area or not, and I know they're going to move. Are they going to be informing us when they decide to start making a leave zone on, on these cameras at lights?
Yes. And they will be signed? There'll be signs?
We'd like to know as well, right?
Yep, and the public will know, but I can tell you, people, based on what's happened in other jurisdictions, they just keep beatin'.
Yes.
You know, and just quickly takes pictures, sends you the bill. And the bill goes to the car, not to the driver, so it doesn't affect your driving record. It's just, it's money.
No points.
No points. Yep, there's no demerit.
So getting back on the lights, I had mentioned previous meetings again about the traffic lights and how they're not very intelligent. Now, they're supposed to be more intelligent. I mean, I'm going to complain again. I received complaints. Is there a study being done? What are we going to do to improve traffic? McLeod Road is an absolute joke. That stoplight by Walmart or Corwin.
So can I tell you something about that one?
Yes.
So that one, there was a problem. Rat, oh, Mr. Nichol can give us an update on what happened there.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you were doing a great job with that.
No, no!
We, the region was notified. We got a lot of complaints as well, even though it's a regional signal. The rats had chewed through a lot of electrical and caused the signal timing to malfunction. So that's been fixed, we're told. All things coming together today.
Thank you, thank you. I, I, I've sat in that traffic a long time, and it has not been repaired. I know that we have traffic going north, south, east, and west, but when you have no traffic coming from the east or from, actually from the north, I don't think all the cars are backlogged or lining up, especially when you're coming off the highway. From Fort Erie onto McLeod Road, and you already have traffic from the light all the way to that light, all the way back to the other light, and the person or people coming off Fort Erie cannot get on McLeod Road. Two or three lights. That's unacceptable. Someone has to put some smart lights in there, some sensors or whatever it is. The same thing goes on many other streets. I already mentioned Mountain Road, you know, taking a left on Mountain Road after you put the circle in, one car every light, unacceptable. Dunn and Drummond, you sit there and there's no cars coming, and east and west, they just line up, wait, because it's a time, it's on a timer, there's no sensors. I mean, you want people to have car emissions just continually build up, and we're supposed to keep traffic moving because cars run more efficiently when they're moving versus standing still, and we do not do anything about it. Something needs to be done, and needs to be done quickly, not tomorrow. There's a lot of people working in traffic. They can do their job and go up there and fix things and sit there and do timing studies, whatever they want to do, but let's get it fixed. Bus stops is another thing that I had brought up.
Yep, so just on this topic, Counselor LaCoco wanted to speak to the traffic light comment?
Yes, on McLeod Road, I just got an email yesterday from Jeff Black at the region specifically about McLeod Road and Oakwood Drive. It says the intersection of McLeod Road and Oakwood Drive is a part of a coordinated network and is connected to the region's centralized traffic signals management system. This allows for the implementation of traffic signal timing plans to accommodate traffic volume at the intersection itself, as well as coordinating between other intersections along McLeod Road. Regional staff are in the process of reviewing the traffic volumes and signal timings along McLeod Road with the goal to implement updates in light of changing traffic volumes in the area. Specific to the intersection, dual left turn lanes are present on the south leg of Oakwood Drive in order to accommodate the high number of vehicles turning left onto McLeod Road. Because of a dual left turn phase is present, the north and south legs need to operate on their own phases, meaning the green indication is shown to each approach individually. In addition, and based on the relatively low traffic volume on the north leg of the intersection, vehicle detectors are in place so that a green indication is only given to the southbound vehicles when they are present. If no southbound vehicles are present, the system skips this phase and gives more time to the east-west approaches. Also worth mentioning is the need to provide pedestrian, pedestrian timing at this intersection. When the pedestrian push buttons are activated by those wanting to cross McLeod Road, the green time provided to vehicles on either the north or south approaches need to be extended by the length of time it takes a pedestrian to cross the road. This is not often noticed by drivers, but something that is essential for pedestrian safety at the intersection. So that was as of yesterday.
So it's part of a coordinated system, and that one, though, I'm, I know because I was sitting at it the one day, and I called in, and I said, there's something wrong. Nobody was coming from the north, which is Niagara protective coatings, and everybody was backed up. Something's wrong with this.
Well, there's, there's lots of issues with traffic lights all over the city.
So the other part?
I mean, you know, we have a city that's growing. We have so many cars backing up on traffic lights when no other traffic is coming on the through section. I mean, it's, it's, they have to do what they're supposed to be doing, and that's their job.
So I'll just give you the one, because I, I agree with you, and I brought this up with the region before. Now, all street lights, all traffic lights are all the region, right? They control them all.
Yes.
And I said, why don't we update to all smart intersections so that at nighttime, you don't have to wait when there is no cars whatsoever?
Right.
At the very least have flashing reds, like, why are we sitting here for nobody? And they said, it's a massive upgrade. Like, they said, some of them are modernized and some intersections aren't, and they can't coordinate them all until they are. But I agree, sensors, whether it's motion sensor or underneath in the road, like, we got to do, keep things moving. I agree with you. So maybe I'll come back to Mr. Nichol. What suggestion would you make for us, frustrated about the situation?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a few longer term initiatives underway. Our Transportation Master Plan is the biggest one. But as, as I'm hearing this, I think what I'd like to do is arrange a small workshop with the region's transportation group, those folks who are in charge of running the programs, and, and counselors, specifically counselor who have some passionate interest about this and can share some real world locations. I think if they heard it directly from, from you and what you're hearing from residents, they might be stimulated to do some changes. And then if there's other things that we need to learn from them on, you know, why there are reasons why it's not happening as quick or as efficiently as it could be, you know, we might learn a few things from what they have to say. So I'd be happy to set that workshop up, and we can discuss all these things in greater detail.
Sound good?
Love to be a part. I'd love to be a part of that.
Okay, great.
And the last thing is the bus stops. I did mention that one time, coming out of Corwin, onto Lundy's Lane, and the one on the left, well, the sign is magically gone. A few wires are hanging there. I don't know if the power's been disconnected, but now you can, perfect view. But they do need to be looked at. Advertising maybe should be going on top of these units versus, I don't, I don't know why the locations that they were put in, and definitely not an engineer, nothing against engineers, engineering, engineers did not put them in those locations. If they did, they should go back and get the ring.
And that's to put what in them?
The bus stops, the location of the bus stops. You know, when you're exiting Falls, the old Dorchester Manor, for example, like, you exit and the bus stop is right beside you with a big sign, and you can't see the traffic coming. It's dangerous, especially when you have elderly over there. There's a lot of places that, that have been set up, and hopefully in the future for Niagara Falls, when we're losing, we're looking at our, our bus stops, that we have them go off the road instead of just stopping. I mean, you have bus stops, they should be pulling off. We should be, you know, if we're doing road widening or anything like that, we should look at making areas where buses will be moving off the side to allow traffic. Because traffic in an area or Niagara Falls with this many people in them, Niagara Falls was not designed for the infilling. Our, our infrastructure doesn't really support, because of the canal, obviously, and few traffic, but we don't support that high volume of traffic. And, you know, you have traffic backing up for three or four blocks, and that's unacceptable. So we have to do something to increase the movement of vehicles.
Yeah, the efficiency of...
Correct. Thank you.
I will pass that along to staff, and when you guys are redesigning streets, I suppose, any insight or comment, Counselor?
Thanks, Counselor. You did ask for a sightline review. The region sent me a draft. We sent it back for some updates, some different technical standards, and I have a final version in my inbox that I'm waiting to review and send over to you. They also talked about some signal timing. I think it'd be a good opportunity to send it to you and schedule that workshop around the same timing, so we can tackle these issues together. We also are working with the region on their Lundy's Lane Reconstruction EA, which is the High Level Planning Study, and we're hoping that they do take safety and transit accommodations into factor as well.
Great, thank you for that. Counselor Strange, and then Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this has nothing to do with rats.
Then we're not interested.
Unless, unless people are leaving their candy out, then it might have something to do with rats, because we're October third, and in four weeks, we're Halloween. Can't believe it, but being ninety degrees out, you wouldn't think it was coming, but we have our fourth annual Spooky Awards are coming up, and I just wanted to mention that. Former City Councilor Chris Dobrowski came up with this idea, and I think it's, it was a great way, especially during COVID, to get families and kids involved and decorating their house and, and fun ways around Halloween when a lot of people couldn't even go house to house. So we are on our fourth annual. I just want to just go over a little bit of, you can show off your, show off your boo-to-ful display.
Oh, I get it.
You get that?
Boo-to-ful, yeah.
I didn't write that. For Halloween display, and Ern Braggan writes to your neighborhood, the city of Niagara Falls is fourth annual Spooky Awards competition, which is back for 2023. Spooky Awards is a free outdoor Halloween themed decorating competition open to Niagara Falls residents with prize awards for people's choice, judges' choice, and best effects. Over sixty properties participate in the competition in 2022, which were amazing, and I'm sure, I don't know if you're one of the judges, but I know you went to a bunch of...
I just did awards, I didn't judge.
Yeah, they were, they were amazing. Residents can register their properties in the competition between October fourth, which is starting tomorrow, and October twenty-fifth, with an online voting and judging window taking place from October twenty-seventh to October twenty-ninth. Winners are announced during the day on October thirty-first at niagarafalls.ca/spooky, allowing residents to map out their trick-or-treating route to include the spookiest houses across Niagara Falls. So you can create an outdoor Halloween display at your home or business. You can enter by registering online as well at niagarafalls.ca/spooky. Tour displays across the city with the spooky map. So anybody can go out, and you can go between six and ten P.M. from October twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, and encouraged to tour the city and look at these beautiful displays that businesses and residents put up. It's, it's a really nice way of, of going through Halloween and at any age. It's really, really nice. You can cash your vote in the People's Choice Awards, voting your favorite display, open to the public online, niagarafalls.ca/spooky. Winners are announced on Halloween. Spooky Awards will be announced on Halloween Day on October thirty-first. Tour the spookiest houses, houses in Niagara Falls as part of your trick-or-treat route later that night. Wouldn't that be cool if you can get dropped off in a neighborhood where they have like a really, really crazy spooky and exciting? And there's a lot of those houses out there. They really go all out. I, I know you've been to a few, and there's been a few themes. What was the one, Bill, that we saw yet last night where the girl was kind of hanging? I can't remember the name.
Oh, on, on Ryle?
Yeah, what was that? It was, it was from a certain show. I can't remember, but it was Stranger Things. It was just amazing.
She's floating.
Yeah, it was pretty freaky.
That was.
You know, even for adults going through there and having your kids, and a lot of the, the parents go out and like to go with the other parents and tour the cities with the kids. So I just encourage everyone to come on out and, and encourage people to dress up their houses, and if we can top last year's, would, would just be amazing, just a, a great way to top off this year from the Sparkle Awards.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for the plug for Spooky Awards. And next, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Just a, I guess a word through you, perhaps to our C.A.O., just wondering if there's going to be a report coming back. I know the last term of council, I brought forward that the city actually owns a parcel of land that fronts on Tequila Road. It's a long parcel of land, but it, it, it's about five and a half acres. There's different types of housing that are along the land, R4, R2, R1. I thought we were going to use it as part of, I guess, some form of affordable housing, but if we're not, your worship, then perhaps, you know, I've seen other municipalities put land up for sale and put a caveat on that, that it has to be used for affordable housing. So I just wondered if I can get an idea of where staff is at with it. Doesn't have to be today. It can be at a future meeting. It doesn't bother me, as long as it's coming back at some point, your worship. Thanks.
Mr. C.A.O., okay, direction? Okay, so it's on the, it's on the list, it's on the radar?
Yeah.
If there's, yeah, oh, Counselor Patel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's for Mr. Nichol. I was in Quebec City a couple of weeks ago, and I saw that at the traffic signals, they had those touchless hand, you put your hand down there, and then signal goes. One of those touchless, I don't know what you call it. Instead of pushing the buttons, it's just motion activated. So you think we can look into it, maybe try a pilot project to see how that would work? Because I thought that was genius, especially people who has, we were talking about people who are in wheelchair, they don't have to reach up to push the button, they can just use their hands down there.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Ontario would govern things a little differently than Quebec, but we are going to be meeting with the region in a workshop soon, and this sounds like it's right up their alley, so we'll explore that with our traffic staff in the region as well.
I think it's because they have poutine on their hand, and they don't want to touch it, so there's, you know.
I was breaking up memories, yeah.
All right, if there's no further, a new business, look for a, oh, wait, no, I almost got, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Clerk. One bylaw. We have first, second, and third reading for the bylaw. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. That's it, Mr. Clerk? Motion for adjournment. Counselor Patel, second by Counselor LaCoco. All those in favor? We're adjourned. Oh, no, Counselor Thompson wants to stick around for a little while longer. He voted against it.